There we have the mic checked. I hope everyone's done that. Good morning, everyone. Um, welcome. Today is Tuesday, March twenty sixth, and it is nine thirty AM, nine thirty one. And we are here for the Committee of the Whole meeting. And prior to um, starting, I'd like to start with the uh, land acknowledgement. The municipality of Jasper respectfully acknowledges that the municipality of Jasper is on Treaty Six and Treaty Eight territories, as well as the Jasper House Métis district. This land is a traditional territory meeting ground gathering place, traveling route and home for the Danzay, Assinuwachi, Winawak, Assinuwachi, Naya, Na- Naiwak, uh, Anishinaabe, Sepwepnek, Stony Dakota, Mountain Métis and Métis. And so, welcome to everyone. Uh, we have a number of people in the gallery. And uh, we do have a quorum, so I'd like to call a meeting to order. Are there any additions to the agenda? And okay, so we have no additions to the agenda. And if I could get an approval to the, of the agenda. Thank you, uh, Councillor Waxer, all those in favor. Thank you. We have in front of us the March twelfth Committee of the Whole Minutes that were approved um, on March nineteenth at the regular council meeting. Item four point one, are there any, is there any business arising from the minutes? And I'll give you a moment to look at the minutes. If there is no business arising, then we can move on to delegations. And we do have a number of individuals in the gallery. And uh, at this portion of the meeting, just for the benefit of those who are watching and those in the room, this is a portion of our agenda where any member of the community can come forward to address council on any topic that is on the agenda. And if there are individuals here today to make a presentation. And uh, I recognize we have Justin Melnick from the Jasper group hub. I wonder if uh, we could have you join us at the table and uh, during this opportunity, we have approximately three minutes for individuals to address any item that is on the agenda um, at this point. And um, Mr. Melnick, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor Melnick. Uh, yes, I would just like to address council and administration about the uh, current patios. Uh, I'm hoping to open a conversation about extending, or sorry, augmenting the window that we operate our patios in. Um, it's my understanding we have a hundred and eighty days from Parks Canada. And I hope we shift that from a May first start date, which would go till October twenty eighth, to April twenty second, starting um, to install and be ready to open earlier and then be able to have the patios fully removed by October nineteenth, which would be a hundred and eighty days. Um, some, we feel with the window, uh, we're getting better sunlight, we're getting, people are willing to be out and about more earlier in the spring with maybe chillier temperatures, but still wear that jacket um, versus in the fall. Uh, I've had all summer enjoying warm weather and uh, personally, I don't really want to be taking my patio in the snow, which could happen in late October, so. Um, yeah, we're just looking to maximize that window. Jasper has a lot of events going on on April twenty seventh with the half marathon. There's probably fifteen hundred participants in that race, plus people that are supporting those racers, as well as uh, Rugby Sevens uh, tournament that's happening that weekend, which I think has quite a few teams as well. So just asking how uh, we could look at changing the window, um, staying within the parameters of the park tree directions, I understand that, but just how we go about moving along and uh, changing the dates. Thank you.
Uh, councillors, um, thank you, Mr. Melnick. Are there any um, questions for councillor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick, and thank you, Mr. Melnick, for coming today. I'm not opposed to this at all. I'm wondering if, is this a general consensus from all patio owners in the town?
Um, I've talked to a few. Um, there are, like, Stavro Bonis is here from Jasper Pizza Place, um, so he's in support of it. Um, I do want to canvass a few others. Uh, I've talked with Tours in Jasper. Uh, they've mentioned they, they're in support of it as well with everything going on in that April uh, weekend. And I have talked to the chamber as well. Uh, if I could work on getting some letters and support as well. I still only kind of ideas come about the last little bit. It was pretty quick to get on the agenda by just looking at the dates and um, with the fact that we need to schedule contractors and stuff to get everything set up. I was just trying to get ahead. I know in the past, sometimes with patios, we've come at the last minute, so I was trying to do everyone a favor and be a little bit more ahead of the game here, so. Uh, yeah, just hoping to see how that looks.
Just ask a question of administration. Is this something that we have, we, could you?
Um, Deputy Mayor Melnick for councillor Hall, there are at least a couple of um, uh, regulatory implications, operational implications, and then just process uh, would be a bit of a challenge. Maybe I'll speak to the process side of it. Um, and then um, I can pass it over to Director Nadon to speak about the regulatory sort of limitations. Um, and Director Greathad to talk about the operational implications. Uh, first is around process. I really appreciate uh, the interest in getting this on the agenda early. Um, and as council knows, um, committee can't necessarily, can give direction to administration, but couldn't necessarily approve changing anything. That would be a council change, because it was a council policy through what was equivalent to a public area where council made the decision, so we really, um, so administration could start some work if council wanted to be this direction. Um, the council couldn't approve anything here today. Um, that earliest effect could happen would be the next regular council meeting. Um, and as you'll hear from Director Nadon, um, the timelines are actually a part of our rule from Parks Canada. So there would be some steps in order for the municipality to formalize a request, which would have to come through a regular council meeting, uh, to make that request of Parks Canada and then um, you know, whatever their response time would be. Um, so I appreciate that from a business perspective, this is actually, you know, pretty early and I certainly appreciate the intent. Um, but there are some process things that council have to keep in mind in terms of our ability to be able to respond. Um, maybe I'll pass it to Director Nadon to just speak about where the dates um, for the installations, uh, how they're being regulated right now. Director Nadon.
Thank you, CEO Given. Um, I can speak to our discretionary use permit that we have for, from Parks Canada to have patios in our parking lanes. So um, as Mr. Given sort of outlined, there was a, a process and a committee that came up with uh, some standards that were proposed to parks and they subsequently approved them and put them as part of our discretionary use permit, so. We have terms and conditions that are part of the permits for those installations and those are regulated by us, by the Bio Enforcement Service, but then uh, the pieces that are in the discretionary use permit, uh, we can't necessarily vary. However, council last year uh, did receive variance authority from Parks Canada, so as you recall, you've uh, approved certain changes, including uh, overall height was one of them. Patio maximum size, as well as orientation, um, were areas where parks granted councils some variance authority. So we started acting in, in that capacity and, and granted a few ones there. However, the term is the very first item in our um, discretionary use permit, and it currently says sidewalk seating is permitted from May first to October twenty fourth annually. Uh, materials must be stored offsite, outside this season. So this is one of the terms that is in our uh, discretionary use permit that we don't have authority to vary, is my understanding. So um, as Mr. Given outlined, there would be, however, council would direct administration to go ask for the change essentially would be uh, a process to step through, but that is the regulatory framework we are working within.
If Deputy Mayor, if I could, I just, I think uh, I'd ask Director Greathad to maybe just speak to the operational implications of an earlier startup, because um, there are some sort of physical on the road works that the municipality does in the early spring that gets reported to council and, and I think the business community would be aware of.
Good morning, your worship council. Um, yes, operationally, um, it would be problematic uh, to try and open any earlier. We do uh, uh, get a contractor out to do the money painting and any of that um, during the very early spring. And so that's kind of our window when we're doing the spring clean up, the major planting, anything that's been damaged or destroyed over the winter, that's that's when we're going to be at our busiest downtown. Um, so it would be a bit problematic. This year, I understand that it um, we have a nice warm spring and it, we're going to be able to get some of our equipment out earlier, but we also demand on a bunch of tree planting and stuff in there um, as well, so. Um, I, I still uh, would be in favor of maintaining that May first. Um, we just need that uh, window to get our work done. And our councillors. Councillor Demoto.
Thank you. Um, just so that we may not be requesting uh, blanket requests for all businesses in the community, I'm just wondering uh, if we have the ability here um, at this particular meeting to direct administration to maybe inquire with Parks Canada if there might be some individual flexibility on request, so that um, you know, that one hundred and eighty days can be applicable to the start time when they first start putting up their um, their structures. And uh, one day, one hundred and eighty days from that point to, to the end point. Um, and see if, what kind of response we might get and then work from there. Does that make any sense? Because at least we'll get ahead of, like, the meeting next week, starting from scratch. We could see what type of, um, you know, flexibility that might be. And then come back, get some, maybe get some preliminary information back to council next week to, to move forward with making some decisions.
Thank you, councillor Demoto. I think what you're suggesting would be uh, done when we get to item seven point one, as opposed to this portion of the meeting, but I see where you're going with that. Uh, councillors, any other questions? Now councillor Hall.
Yes, to continue on, councillor Demoto's train of thought that may give you a chance to talk to more businesses and just make sure it's kind of at all across the board. Thing again, I'm not opposed to it, as I remember starting on the patio in October, so.
Uh, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick, through you too, Mr. Melnick the younger. The goal scorer on Super Sunday, I understand. There we go. Uh, thank you for um, appearing and as you say, you're trying to get ahead of this, although um, a month and a day is less lead time for um, a government organization than you might think. Might be lots of lead time in your world. Um, but I do appreciate um, you being here and I appreciate that you're asking for an adjustment, not an extension, um, so the, the start and, and end days, because that is absolutely critical, particularly if you've been watching the proceedings in Banff and the relationship with uh, Parks Canada uh, in Banff with respect to use of public space on their Banff Avenue. So that is recognized and appreciated. Um, my recollection, and I stand to be corrected, um, is that we helped constitute a patio seating task force. I think that you were on it. And when that task force reported to council, ultimately, I believe we accepted essentially all of the recommendations. I presume that the task force has now disbanded, but I wonder whether it is possible um, to reconstitute the members and have a sit down, particularly with Parks Canada, because they're, they're critical player. I would certainly, um, from my perspective, be prepared to accept again a recommendation from the task force. And I don't know whether there is an opportunity to reconvene that, that group and meet with parks. And sort this out and obviously the municipality will have to be part of that and Mr. Greathad has indicated the challenges that we might have from an operational point of view, having things prepared, but uh, I, I am supportive of, and was previously supportive of the work of the task force. I thought it was a great way to handle this. Um, but I wonder whether you have given thought to whether or not you could bring together again that, that task force. Not that it was necessarily your job to do that in the first place, but whether they could be reconvened to come back um, as soon as possible with a recommendation to council.
Yeah, I think uh, the task force was made up of municipal um, employees, Chamber of Commerce was there, Tourism Desk was there. Um, some of those figures or positions held have changed roles, but um, I think we could get a, a group together that would be able to put together some recommendations. Um, I begin running on that right after we're done here, so.
Thank you. Uh, any other councillor comments? No, um, thank you for the presentation. Any um, closing remarks? I um, feel, feel free to um, vlog and.
Nope, just uh, thanks everyone for the time and uh, consideration and yeah, just getting the ball rolling and see where it goes. Uh, yeah, go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the benefit of the uh, individuals uh, watching, we have um, another individual who may wish to present. Um, we have another agenda item. Um, Happy Little Trees on uh, item seven point three. And in the room, we have uh, Mr. Danny Frichette. Um, are you wishing to make any comments to council? Thank you. Um, we'll just get you set up at a microphone and uh, um, we can continue. Thank you.
Good morning, your worship and council, indeed Vice Mayor Melnick. Thank you for the time. I'm just called, uh, uh, here today just to do a small follow up on presentation that I had made um, some months ago, I believe in the late fall or the winter regarding the cleanup exercise that is an annual um, uh, event that we do in Jasper here. And uh, in particular to the um, Snake Hill, uh, Happy Little Trees project. Um, uh, my, my hope is that we can get a directive from council to um, uh, affix, if you will, our project to the, the day of the cleanup. And um, in order that we can, we can um, remove a lot of the old deadfall that has been left from past uh, logging practices, if you will, at Fire Smart and, and other, and other um, exercises to remove the deadfall. There's been a lot of debris left up there that um, uh, on the face of it, uh, is, is a fire problem. We've got an old pit that the uh, the Grand Park Pacific Railway used for their debris that has now become quite an extensive little fire pit full of, full of uh, dry branches, et cetera, that is just waiting to be ignited, I would say. A couple of trees that uh, clearly use some, some glating to, to prevent any kind of brown fire catching up their quite large uh, pine trees and spruce trees. Um, but fundamentally, I think uh, as you all probably are well aware, is the Happy Little Trees effort is, is designed really at its core to invite our, our members of our community and of course the to come and participate in the watering of the, of the little Douglas fir trees that we implanted last year, so I don't know. Um, with a very high success rate, I'll reiterate, we've got an over ninety-six percent success rate of these trees. Uh, doing very, very well. And sadly, there's a lot of, there's a lot of um, uh, debris lodged trees that are including the trail system that is very organic up there. People traverse the hill to and from the west end to town. And I think um, the intent here is to invite um, two real specific members of our community, the, the youngest, our little, our little toddlers that are, we see them walking around, knows the tail around town. Um, I think it'd be a wonderful thing for, for them to come down and to be able to water the plants safely. Um, and of course our seniors that, that um, uh, I'm sure would enjoy a day out in sunshine to be able to come and water the trees and, and safely, so that they can walk through the trails without tripping hazards, which are everywhere up there. Um, I guess in specific uh, terms, as far as John's crew and the Fire Smart effort and the cleanup, pardon me, the cleanup effort, that um, the Happy Little Trees volunteer group would of course love to assist in this. Um, I've done, it's giving me the date uh, of the cleanup for this year. And sadly, I won't be in town those dates, but I was hoping that we could get a directive from council that uh, my volunteer group could remove a lot of it and have it ready for pickup for uh, John's crew, so that um, a lot of the labor, if you will, will be done um, with the volunteer group and not leave everything on the plate for the municipal crews. It's always been, it's always been my position that that uh, this is a, this is a community effort. It's a wonderful project and uh, people are glad to help. I mean, we had a great, a great crew last year. We had a marvelous day. And we got a lot done in a pretty short period of time, because it is a big effort. It's, it's almost four acres up there. So um, yeah, so my, my uh, my hope is that council can see the way clear to to have us assist before the actual cleanup day, so that everything is ready to be picked up curbside, uh, either on, on Willow Avenue or probably Lodge Bowl. Um, to expediate the effort, uh, because you're doing the whole community, so this is, this is a big ask. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the uh, request and councillors, if you have any questions, we will um, go ahead. Councillor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, thank you for coming again today. What is the date proposed, that you're not here for that cleanup?
Uh, the actual day is, I think, April twenty seventh is when the, is when the uh, the community cleanup is done.
Any other councillor questions? Councillor Waxer?
Uh, thank you for your presentation. I was uh, uh, interested to see in our agenda package, the uh, signage that had been approved early, uh, about ten years ago by Parks Canada, and I wondered uh, if, if what your thoughts were on those, that signage and where you anticipated it would be best to have it, have that installed.
Uh, I'm assuming you're talking about the signage on the southeast corner that directs you right off of Little, Willow Avenue up onto the Otis name so itself. There is a sign there now. It's a log structure. Um, yes, it's um, uh, it's, it's sadly, it's, it's, it's ill positioned. It sort of includes the view of the hill that exit, it is actually the east entrance to the town trail. So it, it, it is, I think the intent was to, to give information and saw the thumbnail uh, piece of history, but it really doesn't do that either. Uh, that sign is, uh, in my view, if you want to have directives to, to um, yes, you know, I'm not, I'm not seeing these, but um, they're, they're um, they're dated and they're ill placed. I think that if we're going to encourage a the use of the town trail which traverses the south corner of Snake Hill, um, then it should be, it should be much more obvious. The west, the southwest end is totally included. You have no idea that you're even on the town trail. Um, and let alone uh, entering the most significant piece of the town trail, which is what Snake Hill is in fact. Uh, the rest of it is all contemporary additions to the community. Um, Snake Hill and Grand Park Pacific Railroad in the first Parks Canada uh, have been there since nineteen uh, ten.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Mayor Ireland?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. My first question is, is for administration. I, I could save it till Agenda seven point three, but I think it's fair that I ask, well, Mr. Frichette is in the chair in case he has some response, but the indication is that this is about four acres in size, same so. Is that land or has that land ever been released? Is it still simply part of the park that happens to be within the town? Is it part of our, our general authority over things like um, the Fireman's Park and the Lion's Park and, and other parks in town? And I, I ask that because I generally aware that Parks Canada would prefer that, to the extent possible, that land remain in its natural condition, that it not become that sort of cultured manicured park as, as many parks become. And coupled with that is a sensibility around um, environmental issues, leaving dead trees um, because their habitat for one or more animals. And so if there is to be a cleanup, and I, I appreciate Fire Smart aspect, um, but there will be some sensitivity about what gets removed and something that looks like a an old snag that might be seen as a fire hazard, might also be seen as a nesting opportunity or other for, for birds. And that becomes a different issue. So if there is going to be a cleanup, it seems to me it might have to be coordinated with people with a degree of expertise. And so I'm just wondering whether we as council have authority to determine the extent of of work that is done on that land, which is within our municipal boundary, but not sure that it is ours to manage in the same sense as other land parties. Um, I see Ms. Nadon has her hand up, so I presume that she has a full and ready answer.
Deputy Mayor Melnick through Mayor Ireland. I hope I can meet your expectations. Um, we've actually done some work on this file and uh, I'm now a bit remiss for not sharing it with council, perhaps. We had a uh, an inquiry from a councillor and we did reply. And uh, I've engaged both our fire chief Conti and our uh, Fire Smart contractor, Mr. Van Teegum, on this file to find out what exactly is up with Snake Hill and Fire Smart and what can we do, what can we not do? And um, Snake Hill was a Fire Smart uh, field unit that was treated as part of one of our Fire Smart contracts a few years ago. Probably four or five years ago now. And uh, Mayor Ireland, you are correct that a lot of the logs and um, materials that were left on the ground is for habitat for critters and, and other things. So that was part of the prescription that was approved by parks and those were left there for a reason. Um, however, I hear that um, following the snowstorm in June, you know, people might have dropped off some branches and things may have appeared on Snake Hill that weren't there before. And uh, there probably is an opportunity for a cleanup. And um, our approach there in relation to Fire Smart Day, which is April twenty seventh, so uh, the date is out there and our promotional materials are, are coming out just now. Um, if a neighborhood champion in the area of the trailer court, which there are a few in this room, I believe, uh, could take this on as a work bee and uh, and make it happen. And as Mr. Frichette was outlining, could be uh, benefiting from the town pickup. And um, however, from a jurisdictional perspective, I I don't, I'm not a hundred percent on the parcel and its title, and I'd have to look up the lease to have a, a formal answer, but it is within the town site. It is a municipal parcel, however. Um, the archaeological sensitivities around that piece, uh, Parks Canada would certainly want some input in terms of wh- which areas to protect, which Mr. Frichette might have a better idea with the Happy Little Trees. I'm sure that came up. Um, but also in terms of the environment, like I said, some of those pieces were left there for habitat purposes. And um, before we have a work bee on that, uh, in that area, I would sure want to check with Parks Canada and their environmental jurisdiction over those types of items. Um, so in a nutshell, things that are clearly have been dumped there and, and, and could be removed. Sounds like that's a pretty easy one, but in terms of the entire area and why or why not some big logs were left. That has more of an environmental touch to it.
Thank you for the response, Mr. Nadon. Um, any other councillor comments, questions, councillor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Just a quick question out of curiosity. Will you have the same Parks crew back, or sorry, uh, university crew back this summer to tend to the Happy Little Trees?
Yes, thank you councillor Hall.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Hall. Oh, sorry.
Yes, thank you for the question, Counselor Hall.
Uh yes, there will be.
Thank you. I can't work my TV either. Um. Just for clarification, it's actually the same hill neighborhood though. The Trailer Court is, we used to call it Tin City back in the day, but it's South Snake Hill uh to um. Uh neighborhood, uh the most significant neighborhood in the community, actually. Uh just in terms of municipal uh governance and the exercise of cleaning up. And I totally understand that the historical uh features that are up there. Um may well have to have Parks Canada's footprint on them. I, I. Do plan on addressing that with Parks Canada. There are trees that have been thrown on top of the artifacts. To protect them, if you can believe it. That was the rationale in the day. Um so in a sense, what we've said, what Parks has said. Is a dead tree on top of the most, the, the oldest piece of uh architecture and community is more relevant. In the actual original artifact. It, it couldn't be anywhere backwards, but. I understand that this is not your value week and I'm not suggesting that the municipality. Uh do the legwork that I'm proposing to do and uh I'm happy to do it and will. Uh I, the items that I'm concerned with primarily are the ones that are significant hazards in terms of walking. Um they're. They are including trails and it is definitely fire um potential uh fuel there. Um. Again, I, I would invite council, members of council, uh all, if you will, uh or one. Um I've actually taken the, the counselor Waxer for a tour. I think, I think that uh when it comes to the actual artifacts themselves. Anything that is laying on top of them, um I don't anticipate there being a problem with the Parks Canada's uh archaeological wing. To get those removed. And I wouldn't expect council to go put themselves out uh and do something that they're not clear on. Um however, there's a lot of, there is a lot of debris up there that I don't think is going to, it's going to injure any of those uh problems.
Thank you for that. Um counselors, if there are no other questions. Counselor Demoto?
Just uh maybe through you, Deputy Mayor Melnick to uh Director Naddell. Just curiosity, is the, the Fire Smart Day held on the, the same uh day every year? Is that on the same?
Deputy Mayor Melnick through to Counselor Demoto. It's uh in our community, it is held the same day every year. Um Fire Smart. Canada has a day that is actually in May sometime. Um but historically, we uh compete with the last day at the ski hill and that is not very good for fire smarting. Is why we bumped ours to the end of April. And uh essentially what that means for us, the, the advantage that residents get from uh doing their fire smart. And putting their yard waste out for collection is the municipal service that's provided. So residents can certainly. Organize a work bee or a neighborhood event on any other day. Uh but if they wanna take advantage of the curbside collection of yard waste, it, that's April twenty seventh this year.
That's good. And uh I think the reason I'm going there and, and I think this initiative is, is a good, could be a good conduit for. Um you know, proposing a Jasper day in the community because we're already getting together to do some really good things together and celebrating our neighborship. Um you know, and it's, it's definitely not something that I really wanted to push for, for this year, but. Uh I've been talking about it for, for some time and I'd like to see something organically come from the community itself and then. Um you know, it was the mayor's idea that when we were discussing um that. A Jasper day, that this could be a, a date to revolve around. And I think um you know, initiatives like this and. And I like the name of the renaming of the neighborhood. Actually, I think that's kind of neat. Um you know, another thing to celebrate. So just uh another food for thought and, and those things are in our value week. So. I think uh you know, we have some opportunities there if we've got the same date every year and. Uh this is an area we could celebrate uh as a neighborhood and, and neighbors within the community. Thank you.
Thank you. No other, oh, Counselor Waxer?
So I just wanted to clarify if, if uh there was a work bee on the twenty seventh. Uh on Snape's Hill and the uh debris was brought to the. Edge of the uh they would be eligible for the pickup like any other area. Is that correct?
Counselor Ireland, Director Naddell?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Waxer. I'm just looking at my colleague. Mister Greathead, just to make sure I'm not speaking out of turn, but I, I would say yes. And uh and if that's the case and a neighborhood champion wants to take on that initiative, I would. Uh encourage him to connect with us and we would like you uh have you work with Mister Van Tiggum who we hired this year to. Support our Fire Smart work to make sure that the stuff that gets removed is actually appropriate to be removed. And then maybe he can help navigate the. Although he will enjoy me saying that publicly, help facilitate the Parks Canada conversation perhaps. So. There, there, there is sensitivity around the environment around that piece and to make sure that we don't uh. Go against the fire smart prescription that was put there about five years ago. But it sure sounds like there's additional fuel that was just dumped there after the fact. There are other items that can be removed. So. Um I'd just like to ensure there's some level of coordination there.
Just on a point of note, uh um I have had a conversation with Mister Van Tiggum just briefly. Uh he's aware of the, of the uh, of the uh, of the site, of course. And um we've had the discussion about the, about the uh trees that are left in terms of. Uh the cycle of life, if you will, with trees and letting them go back to nature. And I think uh there's room for that also. Uh I don't think we have to have a wholesale removal. I think there's a lot of the bigger trees that uh add a bit of character uh. And could be moved so that they're not including pathways. But I have talked to Greg and uh. I'd be delighted to take him for a stroll on the hill and, and we can get an understanding of what we want to remove and. In an ideal world, it would be, we would do it in advance of your pickup day so that we don't. Monopolize that day for other projects. So it would just be a pickup then. And if there's a possibility of facilitating a, a, a meeting with Mister Van Tiggum and. And perhaps pick a day in, in advance that I could put together my Happy Little Tree Army and we can. We can do what um we, we are earmarked to do in terms of the Fire Smart effort.
Thank you, Mister Frichette. Um Counselor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um as a member of that neighborhood, the community, the greatest Canadian Jasper. I would happily reach out to Mister Van Tiggum as well and I could be that neighborhood champion. I know you keep saying it and looking at me, but. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. And just, just one other thing that you asked about the, the students. There is, I, I've been in contact with the restoration uh crew again uh. A couple of weeks back and there is a plan to do uh another small implant of trees. On the southeast, on the northeast corner, which we would call the Hill portion. Uh the, the uh, the furthest north corner, we sort of, we sort of left. Um alone because we really wanted to approach the uh, the art, the artifact area first. We have the benefit of the archaeologist from Calgary out for the day and um. Uh it may well be that uh she may be the one, Brittany is earning it, to be the one to. Come back and give us her blessing on what debris is on the actual features themselves. I don't know that Parks Canada has ever had a comprehensive um status for that, other than the location. The, the features on the hill have been um left to just. I guess if we leave them as they are, eventually they'll just be gone altogether. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Frichette and counselors. Um no other questions? Uh we'll probably address things in item seven point three. Um uh during the normal part of new business, but thank you for. Coming to the meeting today, Mister Frichette, and, and we do appreciate it. Um just for the public who are listening as well. Um this was an opportunity for individuals in the room to present to council. On topics that were on the agenda. And there is a process um for delegations also. There, there are opportunities at every regular council meeting and every committee of the whole meeting. Um if individuals wish to make a presentation to council, they should contact our. Uh admin person at Eacorn at jasper dot ja, sorry, jasper dash Alberta dot C A. Or info at jasper dash Alberta dot C A. Um in this way, we can also plan through the agenda. But that's the intention of this particular part of the agendas to allow individuals to come to address. Um items that are on the agenda for the day. And thank you for coming and we appreciate uh. Uh the words and, and we'll continue with the item uh number seven point three uh and continue this discussion.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to say thank you again to John Greathead and his crew for the support with the water all summer. Uh without it, uh this little project wouldn't be where it is today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, counselors, we are now at item six correspondence and I do not think we have any correspondence in front of us. Um which leads us to item number seven, new business seven point one. And uh as we heard earlier, this is regarding the start dates for patio seating in twenty twenty four. Um uh Mister Melnick and. Goal scorer and then maybe the younger of the two of us, but um did make reference to a number of. Opportunities as it related to. Um the upcoming spring season and um what I had hoped at this point in the meeting was to. Have a conversation with administration regarding the process um. Director Naddell had indicated what we can change um from our uh discretionary use permit. Um and I guess I would like to suggest if there is an opportunity for council to discuss. Um if we were to direct administration, um what that direction would be. So that we can um uh move on. Uh. Mayor Ireland also commented to Mister Melnick that. There is the opportunity to bring together the original um committee that was put together regarding. Some sidewalk size, uh height and those things um, which hopefully will have uh information coming back to us. But counselors, um again, this was uh put on the table to be able to make. Potential in adjustment in the patio dates, not extending the season. And uh I would look for other counselors. Um if there was um. Any questions that uh you may have regarding this particular item. Counselor Waxer?
When it's appropriate, I have formally a day, a motion. So I'm ready.
Um prior to making a motion, I guess we did make the motion and speak to them if we'd like to go ahead.
That council direct administration to determine whether Parks Canada is amenable to an earlier start and end date for patios. And if so, investigate whether operations, the operations department can make a, the uh accommodations. To make that so.
Thank you, Counselor Waxer. Um. Mired to discussion, um looking to administration. Is that a, sounds like a clear. Motion uh direction um. Regarding, based on conversation occurred earlier, but uh before we discuss, uh is there any concerns with that motion?
Deputy Mayor Melnick, I think from an admin perspective, we have a couple of questions. Um generally about what it is that council wants us to explore. And then maybe more specifically around motion. I think the general questions would be, is council interested in shifting? The start dates every year to these new dates? Um or is this a intended response to the weather that we've had this year? Because we know that that may not always be the same. Next year, we may see that uh that earlier start date could be a dump of snow. Um and might not be ideal. So a little bit of understanding from council about whether this is a twenty twenty. Four season only request. Whether we're requesting flexibility to shift the hundred and eighty days dependent on circumstance year to year. Uh or we would just want to shift it to these dates. Starting in twenty twenty four and then always use those dates going forward. Like there, there's a bit of a difference there. I think that that's one issue that we would want to understand what it is that council would like us to explore. I think the second issue would be. And I think this is what Counselor Demoto was raising. Is this intended to apply? And compel all businesses to use the same start date? Or is there some desire for council to have? Different businesses able to choose their hundred and eighty days of the calendar year independent of one another? Um so, so understanding that would also be really important. I'm cer, and I'm certain that those would be two questions. That would be important for Parks Canada to understand, uh even if we're just sort of assessing their. Um openness or willingness to consider that. They probably would say, well, do you mean for every business? Do you mean for, or is it, you know, all businesses once? Or do you mean um? Is this change to the program intended to be permanent or is it intended to be only for this year because this year happens to have had good weather? Um so those are two important considerations. And I think the, the final would be uh around the motion itself. The direction to administration to ascertain Parks Canada's willingness or openness to that change. That. Might not be as effective as actually council deciding what change it is that you might like to support and then directing us to formally prove that because. My uh my. Guess would be that Parks would say there's a, there was a formal process and this is formally written down on a piece of paper that is the discretionary use permit. They might give us an indication of sure, fine, submit an application to amend the discretionary use permit. But they won't amend it without a formal motion. Like, yeah, so. If council wishes to make a change to the program, my suggestion would be the most expedient way to do that would be to formally request a change. And formally request a specific change. Asking administration to see whether Parks would be open to it. We certainly could do that. Um we could return and then the answer might be. Yes, if council wants to formally, you know, and so we still will likely have to go through that process. So my suggestion would be that. Council may want to. Develop its position and then make that request. You know, that sort of intermediary step of seeing if Parks is interested. Like, you know, I think it's reasonable to assume. That because it is formalized in a actual discretionary use permit. The answer will be, please apply for variance to the discretionary use permit and follow that process. Um I, I can't see how they would provide us any. Directional side of that, considering it was formalized and, and quite specific in that, in the permit itself.
Thank you for that to Counselor Demoto.
Um not really to speak to the motion, um because I think we only have one crack at. Supposed to be as far as the rules go, but I, I do like uh the, the formulation of it to a certain extent. Um we talked about competing with the end of the ski hill on, on another initiative. Um. You know, on this weekend particularly, um that, that um that they were referring to with the rugby sevens and the, and the half marathon. That's on the same days our uh Fire Smart Cleanup Day. So conflicting uh weather conflict, conflict. There's always gonna be something. Anyway, um I think because of those initiatives and, and usually taking place on the same weekend. That was kind of the desire when the weather is good to take advantage of, you know, the town being somewhat full. And I think a lot of the hotel rooms are used up. Um so if, if we do have weather, good weather on some of those weekends. In any coming year, um I think it would be um. I, I guess as far as our advocacy goes to, to help businesses do as best as they can and take advantage of those. So. My thought process along the lines of, of what was recommended by Mister Given is to. Maybe request a change to the discretionary use permit to allow businesses to individually um use up. Use the hundred and eighty days between. Use up, use the hundred and eighty days between X date and end date. As opposed to having fixed dates. Right now, April, or sorry, May first to, is it? October twenty fourth, is it? Or is it October thirty first? For the patio season. Twenty four. Okay, so that's a hundred and eighty days. I don't think we should hamstring all businesses because some people, seasonality, they might not be ready to open up. They might not have staff. That whole thing. And I think some of them, right now, we can see are hamstrung to take advantage of some. Good weather and having a full town. We don't know what the weather is going to be like on on April twenty seventh, but if it's nice and they have an opportunity to to get ahead of it, to get set up instead of. Starting to set up on those days. I think we should at least try to give them an advantage or help them with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. I will speak to the motion and although. Generally, I'm supportive of. The intention of. The motion, it is not quite the way I would go about it. So I. I suggested to the young goal scoring Mister Melnick. Who's team, by the way, won the A final for the record, the Barley Kings. One again, thanks in part to young Mister Melnick. My, my suggestion to Mister Melnick and the suggestion to administration is that. It might be better to reconvene the patio seating task force, which includes representatives of the municipality and Parks Canada. I don't know some of the details. The the request comes to us as a very general request. And again, well intentioned, but without specifics. My thought is that it might be better to let. Those who are invested in the outcomes. Do a little more work to figure out what exactly it is they want. And again, there are. All sorts of people who are invested. So we have issued, I think, some five year permits. Would those all have to change? What would be the impact on? On those who already have a permit that one of the selling features was that. We stabilized the field for five years up. So people knew what was approaching. And so if if we are looking at adjusting the parameters of those issued permits, then they should have a say as well. So. Again, I'm in support of. Where I think the motion is intended, but in terms of process. I think we had a task force and I, it doesn't exist, but if it gets or can get reconvened. My inclination would be to direct administration. To respond to any requests to reconvene the task force without delay. So that. A recommendation can come back to council to request. A change in. The parameters of the permit issued to us by Parks Canada. That recommendation would include already the input from Parks Canada because they're a member of the task force. Oh, they're not. Did they? They presented to the task force? I'm sorry. Right. So they presented to the task force and I presume would again. But that way, we we could, through that independent body, get a sense of the recommendation. To better inform our request for a change of status in in the permit. So again, I I appreciate the intent of the motion, but in terms of process, I would like to see us. Engage that task force to make a recommendation so that we know more precisely what it is that. We are asking if we do ask for a change in terms of the permit.
So I see a couple of hands up. I'm trying to think which is the right way to go. And I'm going to start with. CEO Given to respond to the mayor, then go to Counselor Waxer, then go to Counselor de Modo.
So just one point in your worship, you caught that Parks Canada. Provided a written opinion at the start of the task force, but they declined to sort of participate. They. Allowed the municipality and the business community to run the task force. And then that came to, again, the entire. Program parameters came to a public hearing where there is an opportunity for other affected stakeholders to provide comment at a meeting and then council formalized its opinion, which. Yeah, so there was there was significant process around this, but Parks was not not a part there. I just wanted to make another observation. And again, this is administration reacting to the presentation today. So please just sort of acknowledge that maybe some additional research. Might be required, but I would. I would hazard a guess that there may be other opportunities for businesses that want to get some outdoor seating out earlier in the season. We have our. Commercial use of public space by law, which has for quite some time provided opportunities for businesses to put. Seating on the sidewalks adjacent to their business. The program that I think we're all commonly referring to is the patio program or the side, you know. Is slightly different. That developed that discretionary use permit is specific to the use of the parking lane. Either for a walk around or for the seat, you know, but that, so. We have a long standing. Bylaw that allows commercial use of public space by putting seats on the sidewalk with no walk around and no impact to the parking lane. So without the benefit of really analyzing the request and the issue. I think that there may be an opportunity for individual businesses that want to get some. Outdoor seating out for a shorter period of time. Without impacting the parking lane to do so under the commercial use of public space by law through the, what I'll call the old style sidewalk seating. So. That might be an option that's available and less cumbersome than. These sort of bigger questions that that are wrapped up in our discretionary use permit that would impact all businesses that are part party to the. The five year approval and the, you know, like the 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 use of parking lane program. Let's let's say it that way. So we can make a distinction. And again, I say that without analyzing the bylaw, looking at each individual case of the different businesses or seeing an application from anybody. But prior to the use of the parking lane, the municipality had a way for businesses that wanted to put seats outside on the sidewalk to do so. I don't. Yeah, so so that could be considered as well.
Counselor Waxer.
I was just going to say that I'm happy to withdraw my my motion and have it replaced with. The one with any other one.
I'm going now to counsel some. Since we haven't voted on it here, if you're willing to withdraw the motion. Alright, so then we have no motion on the floor and I'll go to Counselor de Modo.
Well, tomorrow just happens to be the next Jasper Partnership Initiative meeting. And we're participating in that. So is the chamber and so is doors of Jasper and Parks Canada. So if we could maybe encourage some of the people that were here today in a broader sense, contact their. Other members in the community that want their agencies to advocate for them. I think that could be a good discussion, at least to see, to plant the seed or get things moving. Maybe indicate after this meeting here, whether there's going to be a request for a change or. Where we are with this. And I think that would be a good opportunity. To to have a broader discussion and maybe get things moving a little faster than we choose to do so. Mister Given, are you planning on attending if I may through?
You, sir. Deputy Mayor Melnick for council, yes, I am. Okay, okay. The municipality could certainly bring this up as a, you know, that's a good forum for discussion, but a range of different alternatives. And maybe getting a bit of a sense from. Not sure we have the right Parks leadership in that meeting necessarily, but it is a good forum to have that discussion.
Thank you for that and thank you for the discussion and alternatives. Given that. That meeting is occurring tomorrow and that you'll be attending as well, Counselor de Modo. And Mister Given, does council. Feel that we need to do a formal. Directive or to administration or are we good with this just being part of tomorrow's inter? Sorry.
Go ahead, Counselor de Modo. Thank you. I think what administration. Needs is a formalized understanding of. You know, what we're requesting because I don't think that we have something concrete yet. We have some loose ideas of of what. We think we might want. But what exactly we asked for so that, you know, people at the table understand what we're going to be potentially. Considering. And I think I see the mayor concocting something over there. Your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Thank you, Counselor de Modo. Mister Given, I appreciated your comments about. The ability to use the. The existing bylaw, the commercial use of public space by law exclusive of. Use of the curb lane. But does. Does that still require some sort of permit from Parks Canada? Or, I mean, it's still commercial use of public space and is it, even if they. A business doesn't require use of parking. Either for a walk around or for seating. Are they captured by that general permit? That is issued now by Parks Canada.
Deputy Mayor Melnick for Mayor Ireland and Vince again. Full benefit of being able to take this away thoroughly sort of review both. My answer would be no. Again, the commercial use of public space and the idea of sidewalk seating or sidewalk cafe is a longstanding idea that predates the. Discretionary use permit and the entire thing that happened through COVID. So so on that basis, I would say no. And the discretionary use permit is really tied up in the. Semi-permanent nature of the physical installations. I mean, the the use of parking lane style. And make that distinction, which is what is described in discretionary use, has much more physical infrastructure attached to it. Where. Parks regulatory role starts to come into play if we're talking about. And again, I'll oversimplify just to make the distinction, you know, rather than building a patio in the parking lane if we're talking about. Putting out some tables and chairs that maybe are collected and put inside at the end of the day, very different things. And there is no. Safety code or building permits required to put out. Temporarily is in move in and move out at the end, at the beginning and at the end of each day type of infrastructure. So I'm going to say that no. Those types of installations, the old style sidewalk seating, sidewalk cafe would not be. Connected or tied into the discretionary use permit.
If I may continue. And on that basis, then. Administration does not need a direction from. Committee to receive and process. Applications under the existing bylaw. Which do not require use of parking. You're just free to do that and you don't need any direction from from us to do that.
Deputy Mayor Melnick for Mayor Ireland, that's correct. There's an existing process. There's an existing application. Process and form. Administration does receive these from time to time from different businesses. So. There is an avenue that a business could, you know, if they have an interest, they can choose to avail themselves of and it. Wouldn't require us to go through parks in the discretionary.
Thank you for that. I have been jotting notes, but I'm not entirely sure that I'm ready to make a motion. Using past practice here, I will forecast the motion that I might make. I was thinking of a of a two part. Motion firstly. To. To have committee direct administration and our representative. To raise. The issue of. Altering dates for. Patio seating with the Jasper Partnership Initiative that tomorrow will be. So just get that on the table with some direction from committee. And secondly, I was considering a direction to. Administration to respond without delay to any request made by the patio seating task force. To reconvene to consider a recommendation or recommendation to council to request a change of. The permit conditions. To adjust the start and end date of patio seating. Not to exceed a hundred and eighty. Again, I. I prefer to send it back to the task force if the task force is willing because I I think some of these issues, like. If we change this year to accommodate the twenty seventh of April because that's the date of. The Canadian Rockies Half Marathon and the Rugby Sevens. Next year, that probably won't be the date. It's going to change at least by a day or so. And if that's still. The intent is to have patios open for. Those occasions, then we would have to adjust the dates. And I think the task forces. Is better able to look at a bunch of those details and hopefully come back. With a recommendation as. As to what the request ought to be to parks rather than council trying to struggle with that without. All the stakeholders at the table. So that's kind of my inclination on this issue.
Thank you, Counselor de Modo.
Well, I think that's a really good insight and, you know, in the hands of a really good person, two words, Smith. I am comfortable with that. And I also like the the concept of, you know, generating. Decision through consensus. I I I completely support that if the mayor was going to to make that motion. I don't have any adjustments in my head at the time because I I think that kind of covers most of the discussion we have here today. If I'm not mistaken. So unless any other councillor. Has more input. I would encourage that motion to go forward.
Thank you, Counselor de Modo. Counselor Waxer.
Not a comment, but a question. I believe Counselor Wilson was. Appointed to that and I didn't know if we needed to reappoint someone. To sit there because I'm not sure that that was continued in two thousand and twenty four appointments.
Thank you. Great point. In. Counselor Wilson, of course, is not here, so he could be approached if he could be part of that. And I believe Counselor de Modo was also part of the task force. And. We get to have a motion put over, but are there any other comments? And I'll just, I I was encouraged by what I heard from the mayor and would be. Thinking that that direction is probably the way we should be going and we happy to entertain a motion.
I will make the the motion recognizing. Still, I still see it as a bit rushed. I'm not sure what I'm overlooking, but probably something. So my motion would be that committee. Direct administration and the attending council representative. To raise the issue of adjusting start and end dates for patio seating. At the meeting of the Jasper Partnership. Initiative on March twenty seventh. And that committee direct administration to. Respond without delay to any request made by the patio seating task force to. Reconvene to consider a recommendation to council to request a change of. Permit conditions to adjust the start and end date of patio seating. permit conditions to adjust the start and end date of patio seating not to exceed one hundred and eighty days.
Thank you for that, Counselor Demota.
Yes, in the, in the first part of the motion, do we need to address the term discretionary use permit? When adjusting the dates? Do you think that's relevant?
Discretionary use permit? It was a separate permit.
Okay. And then semi-cold before not to exceed one hundred and eighty days.
Any other questions or discussion? Saying then I will call a question. All those in favor? And that's carried. Kobe?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. I just wanted to, I know he's gone, but to thank young Mr. Melnick, the goal scorer for coming today. It's important to note, though, that the team they beat, the Outlaws, made it to the A final for the first time in Outlaws franchise history, led by Jaspers only and arguably the best goaltender in the league, Cassie Allen, female goalie from Alphay Village. So well, young Mr. Melnick might be the goal scorer. I think the real hero here is Cassie Allen.
There was a good period of time there, the decades, when that same group developed, and I can name probably a number of other players that continue in, in the league. So on this lighter note, we are at ten forty-two, ten forty-three. If council is good, we'll take a seven-minute break and we will return at ten fifty with item seven point two. Welcome back, everyone. We have nobody in the gallery at this point, and thank you for individuals staying online. Prior to moving on to seven point two, we'll just tie up seven point one with one more comment and discussion. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. As we were discussing the matter before the break, I had asked Mr. Given directly whether there was any need for direction with respect to receiving applications under the existing commercial use of public space bylaw, and he assured me there was not. It, I had an intent initially to add that as, as a third part of the motion, and I removed it. But on further reflection, although administration can certainly receive and process applications, it might be useful for those members of the public to know that that is an option. Because otherwise, that, that might go by the wayside. So I, I thought that I might present a further, further motion, which is that committee direct administration to follow up with today's presenter to consider whether the sidewalk seating cafe section of the commercial use of public space bylaw might address desired use. So just a direction that there be some context. So at least the presenter will know that there might be another option, and I'm sure the presenter share that with, with colleagues, and so they can consider whether that might be an avenue to find recourse for their, their issue without the full blown review of the permit.
Thank you, your worship. Counselors, any comments? Counselor Demota?
Well, I was just gonna ask if, while we're on it, if I can go back to last week's motion, when I thought I was gonna go against something. We just changed that while we're, while we're here spitballing. I'm just kidding. Thank you.
Counselors, any comments on the motion? Seeing no comment, I'll call a question. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you for that, your worship, which now brings us to item seven point two. Capital budget carry forward. And we have Ms. Melunchak here, Director of Finance Administration, to present this particular writing to council.
Good morning, Deputy Mayor and Council. Thank you. Today, administration is coming to council, committee at the whole to request that committee recommend council approve the carry forward capitalists of incomplete items from the twenty twenty-three capital budget to the twenty twenty-four budget. Basically, what occurs in this situation is that a lot of invoices and payments will come due still in January, February, even sometimes March for the prior year. So we have collected all of the twenty twenty-three invoices. We have clear indication of where the projects stand at this moment. So we are requesting this so that we can ensure that all the capital projects that have begun, that they can continue moving forward, and also that the projects that didn't begin, that they start in twenty twenty-four. The carry forward budget that we're requesting is in the amount of fifteen million, seven hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-three cents. Of this amount, sixty-one percent of the recommended carry forward items are work in progress. And the other thirty-nine percent are, have not commenced. However, keep in mind that thirty-two percent of that number is five million that was committed to the JCHC community housing parcel development. Or the five million that council allocated to that project in itself. So basically, on the next few pages. Oh, and what occurs after, if the amounts are approved? What happens after that is that it's added to the twenty twenty-four capital budget as it's approved. And then that number would increase and it centered it to our financial statement or financial software, so that we can continue monitoring and accounting for all of those items. On the twenty twenty-three capital carry forward to twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four attachment that you see, it's straightforward. Basically, what you see is the amount that wasn't spent in twenty twenty-four is carried forward to, sorry, the amount that wasn't spent in twenty twenty-three is carried forward to twenty twenty-four. So none of the dollars that have been already spent would come forward. Some projects, I think it's actually just one for going forward is reduced in the amount. So that was for the the IT, under IT for the server. So the project's coming in under budget. So we reduce the amount that we're going to carry forward. And the only other thing to note, basically, within the context of this is that there's some gray spaces within the table that you see. And what we're doing is just carrying forward the amounts in those blank spaces and combine them together underneath of the activity center renovation portion of the rep project that is ongoing. We knew that some of these projects would either not be done or that they would come in under budget. So the ice plant came in under budget, so we're moving those funds also to the amount that we're carrying forward for the activity center renovation project. So this does not increase the budget of the project. It is just, we knew that that project was coming in under, under budget. So I had already planned that in the financing of the increase when we first started talking about that the, the project was going to increase at that time. So that was part of the plan. So you'll see that of those four, it's all amalgamated into one now. And that's basically a good summary of what you see in front of you. And the other notes that you have would be that which ones are work in progress, as well as, you know, which ones haven't started. They might just be a carry forward into the next year to, to start the project. Thank you. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you for the presentation and a lot of detail here. Counselors, do you have any questions? And we'll take a few moments here just to go through. So Director Melunchak, just because we have a lot of projects going on right now, this is probably a higher amount of carry forward than we would have had in previous years, dollar wise.
Yes, might be, have to look back for actuals. Definitely probably comparable to what you saw from the twenty twenty-two to the twenty twenty-three year. But yes, it is a significant amount, and it is mostly due because of the, the project, the, the projects that we have ongoing, yes.
Counselor Demota? I, I had a similar question, and it was more around the percentage of the budget. Subtracting the, the five million dollars for housing, it's about one-third of what we improved the, the year before. So is it like, I guess my question is, is it normal to see a third of your budget get deferred to the upcoming years?
Deputy Mayor through to Counselor Demota. Normal in what sense for Jasper, maybe? Because as, as we know, that it's a little bit harder to have our projects go ahead as, as as fast and as, as efficiently as we want them to be, mostly due to our location. So that is pretty typical for Jasper. I don't know if, if compared to other communities, I don't know if that would be the same, but for us, yes.
That's right. So I appreciate that. And again, through you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, I, I think I have my, my next question is on the wastewater treatment plant. And just because the, you know, our, our recent change over to, you know, our process from the triple C model. Part of that is the, the annual capital requirement. I just thought that that went into reserves regardless to address future projects on that specific area. So I just to clarify, you know, the, the difference in what we have collected and what's spent. And then, you know, why, just what those numbers represent, if, if I can get some clarification on those. Thank you.
Well, I, I, Deputy Mayor through to Counselor Demota. So the, the big thing about this is that in this report, you don't see what is funding the amounts that are presented. So they are prior, we approved on, a lot of these might, a lot of the amounts are debt as well as also being covered by, well, we've done a lot of the projects under Alberta Municipal Wastewater Partnership as well. So you don't see that part of it in these figures, of how we're covering the, whether it be reserves or whatnot. So this is just the amount that we're caring for, for those projects going into the next year and continuing into what we already have planned for the twenty twenty-four year.
So if I may follow up, Deputy Mayor. So we're not, we're not reporting any surplus at all with what is being collected through the capital portion of the model.
Deputy Mayor through to Counselor Demota. No, basically, I don't know how the surplus wouldn't be really looked at within the context of these projects, because we would be spending the amount that we, we budgeted and any, if anything. Okay, so I think, I think, I think I know what you're relating to. So if, if a project comes under budget, then the, the amount would go back to the reserve. It would just stay in the reserve. So if, if that project came under, for sure, it just never moves from that reserve account.
So that two point five million and the one point one are earmarked for specific project titles. Okay, that's good. I just needed that clarification, because so we've, we've spent a portion of that and we need to spend the rest of that on those for going forward. Thank you.
Just a question with that. Would those funds been the funds that we received potentially from the grant from the provincial government for wastewater treatment improvements?
Yes, some of the funding is coming from that. A lot of it has been submitted for the prior years. So we have done reporting and submitted to for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. So there will be a slight amount left going into the twenty twenty-four that would still be going towards those projects within those annual capital requirements.
Thank you. Mr. Bregan?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just to clarify, some of the ongoing projects where this is, this money is being attributed to. We're finalizing the dewatering project or the centrifuge replacement. So that included a centrifuge, new chemical batching systems, new pumps, dosing system. We just closed tender and awarded the contractor in negotiations to enter contract with a provider for the replacement of the UV bulb systems. The UV bulbs are the final stage of treatment that the wastewater passes through before it hits the Athabasca River. So the UV sterilizes any pathogens. And so that, that system was twenty years old and is being replaced as well as some of the air process blowers. Our, our, the wastewater treatment actually uses a fair bit of oxygenation as part of the treatment. And so the blower system is quite complex, quite robust, and that is also being replaced. So those three projects are underway, and they will be kicking off within the, the next four weeks forward.
Thank you. Counselors, any other questions? Counselor Blackser?
I was just wondering about, there was a couple of things that were not recommended to carry forward, and I wondered if you could just provide some update on that. That was under solid waste and memorial bench program.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor through to Counselor Blackser. So there were a few projects that came in that were higher, that received quotes higher than were then anticipated. So the, the projects were then decided that we wouldn't look forward with those because of the expense of this time. And then the memorial bench program, that one was from twenty twenty-two. And we had funds also approved in twenty twenty-four. So we won't be moving that twenty-two portion forward, but the twenty twenty-three portion is recommended to move forward. Just trying to close up some projects as much as possible and ensure that we're not rolling things forward for too many years.
I, if I may, Mayor Ireland, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Through you to Director Melunchak. I have three questions. For two of the items, specifically hose tower repairs and boilers in the fitness activity center. There is a notation under additional notes, but there is no actual budget number shown. Can you just explain to me how that works in, in this chart?
Sure. Deputy Mayor through to your worship. Yes, so basically, those projects were approved and added to the budget after the budget approval in twenty twenty-three. Therefore, they were added, but not to the system software. So the notes on the side are to kind of say, this is what council directed. We will be spending that money. Um, so the notes on the side are to kind of say, this is what council directed. We will be spending that money. It it's quite an update to um. Put the budget into the system. So if we did this every time, it would, it just takes a a long time. So what I do is take. Note of the motion and, you know, um, make sure that that's indicated so that we can recall, okay, this is when. Council said go forward with this project and um it just adds it into the budget without going in and adding more time administratively.
Thank you for that. My other question then is with respect to um. The valve exercise program under the Fitness and Aquatic Center. Issue, um. I don't recall specifics of that. But again, I. I have trouble sometimes understanding why something like an exercise program would be part of the capital budget. Uh, rather than an operational budget, but is this? Has that valve exercise program got something to do with the ongoing renovations or is that? Sort of expected uh maintenance of the system and are we missing something? By carrying that forward, I I would think that. A valve exercise program is something that should be ongoing. Carrying it forward uh year to year. It seems that it may have other great questions, so some sort of explanation on that would be appreciated.
Sure, your worship um through. Deputy Mayor, um. So being that I used to um. Work in the Fitness and Aquatic Center, I do know um the operation is being held off because of the closure and they will. Do it as they open, um, there will be a lot more um. That probably sees up. Um, during the closure, so there will be a a program while everything's checked and made sure that um they're working properly, not allowing any leaks or backflow. Um, to occur and then they would be replaced. Now, um, the the reason it is on the. Um, capital budget budget is because of the expense and it is a repair replacement program. So. In the end, yes, I would be rolling it through to the operating budget and accounting for it through the operational budget, but because it's such a great amount. It's not huge, but it's a larger amount. Um, we put it here so that it can be seen as an individual item. And um it's not fluctuating the operating budget. Annually so that there's a question of, oh, why are we going up so much one year and down so much another year? Um, uh, so that it can just be, okay, yeah, this is a project that we're doing this year and that's why they held off on doing it until they reopen for. Um, they would want to check all of those to make sure that they're replaced.
Makes perfect sense. Thank you very much. Last question I have, if I may, Deputy Mayor Melnick. The log cabin. Portion of renovations um undergrounds in the additional notes. It says it's included in budget below, but. Not sure that I follow all the links. Can you just explain what's going on with? The carry forward for the log cabin?
Uh, yes, your worship. So um in the end, the log cabin was deemed as um not um. Moving part, moving forward as part of the. Full recreational project project that's ongoing. So the funds were still going to be needed though going forward into the the rest of. The project going, seeing that there was an increase in the budget. So that. Two hundred thousand that was there is rolled through and is part of part and parcel of the two million one hundred and sixty five thousand one dollar eighty seven. That's. That you see on that line under just the activities number. And the same with the. Ice plant part that's rolling into there as well. So any of the funds that were left over or not spent are becoming part of that project. And we're just going to roll it into that that line item so that it can cover that part of the budget.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Seeing no other um questions. Um. We would need to. A um. This to be forwarded to council? Or uh approval? Is that what we're looking for? If I could have a council, uh counselor. Make that recommendation.
Counselor Demota? Sorry, I have a couple more questions if you don't mind. I'm all good.
All good, go ahead.
Okay. Um. Just on the uh. Fire hall, um. We had a, we have some carryovers on the kitchen and stuff and I, is that still? Been moved on from twenty twenty two budget? Didn't we approve that like two budgets ago and then we're just moving this forward again? And how come that's not getting done like that? I guess that's the. Question there. Thank you. Through you, sir.
Deputy Mayor Melnick through to Counselor Demota. It is getting done. I am happy to report it is getting done. Um, and uh. Finding contractors to do work is um, we had five contractor visits for that project. And which resulted in one bid. And we had to get creative and find another one and do some project management ourselves, but in in a nutshell, it is getting done and we are planning to be on budget, even though this has been on the books for some time. We are. Uh, trying really hard to come in under budget with the rising costs of contracts and materials. It's a challenge, but we are, we are doing it and um. And I can say that there truly is a need for that project in terms of. Uh, that kitchen gets used by firefighters every two months. They have a legacy dinner they call and they try to feed. About forty people in what used to be a bit of a galley kitchen, which was a problem. Um, so we're getting creative around budget, but if you uh you should come by the station sometime and have a look. It's a. So all the carpentry and the electrical and the plumbing is done. We are currently waiting for cupboards, which we ordered about four weeks ago to six week delivery time. And uh I expect this project we complete in. I would say June. So yes, it is happening.
Yeah, and I guess just on that that same project, I remember that we approved uh uh some capital. Around uh the power plugs for um. For outside there and that had to do with the the curb uh structure and and how that was all initially. It's all that has that been completed as well or is that okay? It's good and it's working?
Yes, thank you for the question, Counselor Demota. So what you see here is the structural protection unit driveway. Um, there was another project called sidewalks and parking plugs, which you don't see as a carry forward because it has been completed. And uh essentially for the SBU driveway, the driveway itself is done. Uh, the price of concrete is um. Quite high. The money that's left is for the landscaping around it. So you'll notice we're still pretty. Full of dirt around either side of that driveway. So that's what we'll be using those dollars for irrigation and things like that.
Any further questions?
Well, um, I do have a question and just a comment. Um, just because a a few weeks ago I I brought up a question. Uh, revolving around what stages are we at with different items that we uh approved as far as recommendations? Uh. That came forward for the uh arena and activity center project. And I think um administration asked for some more specifics. And I've been really diligently trying to formulate. All those things and I think I kind of have everything uh lined up and uh I I intended to have it ready. Uh, by cutoff time last Wednesday and and hopefully I I'll I'll get it in uh by tomorrow afternoon. Uh, but it's just, it's going to kind of detail, um, like on specifics. Things that, you know, we we approved and uh as far as the increases went as well because we. Uh, increased the budget by four million at one point and another six million to to get us to the the twenty million mark and. Um, I had some questions in the committee that, you know, uh, asked me where some of these were and. Um, even going through all of those wonderful. Uh, updates that uh Amanda has given us. It was very hard for me to to nail all of them down. So. I will come up with a a little bit more of a cumbersome request. Um, but the one specifically here, just because it's highlighted, we had an emergency purchase for. Two boilers and um, you know, I went back because I I thought that we had that approved. On the last council, so um not for many of you here today, but I just, I wanted to know, because I I thought at one point that we approved like. Uh, a hundred and fifty thousand or or something to that effect on the last term to replace the boilers. And I'm just wondering. If that money, if that was continually deferred or what happened to that approved. Expenditure because I think it ended up somewhere. We didn't replace the boilers and then. We had kind of an emergency experience here. So I just, I wanted to know. Um, if those were the same boilers. Um. And I understood they were for the Fitness and Aquatic Center. So I just. Uh, I'm wondering if if that money was already there and we just maybe lost track of it or something. Is that a reasonable question?
Deputy Mayor through to Counselor Demota, um, I don't recall um that. Uh, approval in the last term. I would have to look back um. Four or five maybe years uh to see what um. Uh, when it was approved and which it was, what it was referring to and and how it went forward. Um, I barely remember last week, so um, but. Yeah, um, so yes, we would have to look back on those records to see what was, what the motion was and what, how that proceeded and what exactly it was for. So I can, I can't, and as looking, as I was looking around the room, um, I've seen other. Um, that other directors are looking the same, never in uh no recollection of of that project, but um. Maybe Mr. Given might have something here?
Deputy Mayor.
He's given, yeah.
And again, um. Very quick review of previous capital budgets. The approved twenty twenty three capital budget doesn't have any items in aquatics or boilers. Um, the twenty twenty two approved capital budget. Um, did note domestic hot water tanks, and so that might be the other item. So those were the domestic tanks, uh. The type you would have in your house as compared to the boilers that are used to heat the facility and keep the water that's in swimming pool. So um, that's again, just on a very quick review, uh, that's the only sort of boiler related items uh from that would have come from the previous term. Uh, sorry, in the twenty twenty two or twenty twenty three capital budgets, I can go back a little bit further. There are other items, but that's the ones that I was able to see quickly.
And I apologize, that's probably where my confusion lies, but I I I was gonna ask counsel, but. I remember two gentlemen that were present when we were having that discussion that are are on this council. So I'm like, it had to be the last one. So I will go and find out where my confusion is and then all forward that, but I'm okay with what's in front of us after all those uh. Um, discussion points today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, counselors? And I um. Would be looking for a. Committee recommendation to counsel. There's a counselor willing to make that. Counselor Blackser.
That committee recommend council approve the carry forward forward capital list of incomplete twenty twenty three projects to the twenty twenty four capital budget as presented.
Thank you. We've had debate and questions. If there's no other questions or debate, I'll call the question. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you for that, Director Malincheck. We are now moving on to. Item seven point three. Which would be um the Happy Little Trees project and I see Mr. Greathead is here, um. Uh, please go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, good morning, counsel. Um. I'm here uh for an RFD. I was told to uh come back uh report in a few months. For an update um. With the Happy Little Trees project. So the background on this is on uh third of December twenty twenty three. See me to type all in my RFD, um, but it was twenty twenty three. Uh, Daniel Breschad presented to council regarding this Happy Little Trees initiative to describe the planting of trees, providing a water tank to allow volunteers to water the trees throughout the season. With the intent of beautifying uh the Snake Hill area and increasing community pride. Uh, council motion um for twenty three of twenty three. Uh, is says be be resolved that council received the presentation for information. And that council referred the suggestion of entering into a joint agreement Parks Canada and the Jasper Yola Historical Society to a future committee of the whole meeting. And that council direct administration to continue to work with the Happy Little Trees group for the initiative of the Snake Hill project. Uh, recently, um, I was in contact with Mr. Breschad about the uh about his partnerships and I verified that there's been no formal agreements. Maybe during the Happy Little Trees um. Group uh Parks Canada and Jasper Yola Historical Society today. Administration has been providing support to this group by ensuring that the water tank is filled and if there's any. Um, minor help, uh, there hasn't been very much of a request, but we've always been able to assist. Uh, when needed and um. That's about as far as our uh assistance is is really gone um with this group. Uh, in the spring, we'll make sure that the water is. Topped up and won't um revisited as needed. And I think last year it only took us, I think, four times. I had to go fill it up. So that was uh pretty much the extent of our effort. And that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you for not enjoying our. Delegation period of the meeting. We had Mr. Breschad. Um, just to talk about um some ongoing maintenance and so on. Um. And um. There is a the community cleanup date, viral smart day on the twenty seventh of April. Um. While the recommendation is to receive this or information, is there a further? Motion or direction to um incorporate some of those discussions? Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Have a question maybe for administration about these signs. They were, it says approved by Parks Canada. Were they? Were they made by Parks Canada? Did the municipality? Make them?
Uh, Deputy Mayor, um, when I was um. Working with the friends of Jasper last year, there were some of the signs on the Discovery Trail that had been vandalized, defaced and kind of worn right out. Uh, most of them have been removed. I believe almost all of them have been removed. Uh, these uh ones were from about ten years ago, maybe longer. Um, when when they were there, um, the. Uh, we actually saw it from Mr. Breschad uh this morning. Uh, I kind of got the feeling that he wasn't in support of of these exact signs. So I don't know um what would be, what um would be ideal for that area. Um, but yeah, there was no ask for signs. It was just something that we just, we had looked through um and saw that there was a bit of a missing link there from the past uh till now.
Go ahead.
Are are these signs just sitting somewhere? No, they're not, okay.
Deputy Mayor.
He's given?
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Melnick for Council Hall. No, I I don't believe these signs were ever actually produced. Uh, I think they were in in draft format. Administration identified that if council wished to support greater public. Awareness about the historic nature of uh. Uh, of Snake Hill, um, then there is an opportunity to do that uh by leveraging, you know, there's obviously a discussion of that at some point in the past. Not sure that the signs are produced. Uh, I don't believe they were produced or installed. And so administration saying, if council wants to do something that's within our authority to be able to do, then for a relatively small amount, administration could follow up on this. Um, the. Nature of the discussion previously was, could there be some partnership around increasing knowledge of the historic, you know, nature of Snake Hill? Um, in partnership and and I think that really was left in the hands of Mr. Breschad and his group to sort of. Uh, develop that that awareness. And administrators said, but in the past, there was a discussion about putting up some signs. We could do that if council wants us to.
Go ahead, Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, this is my last comment. Um, I look at these signs. They're very dated. Even our logo is not the new logo. I also feel there's a a piece missing around uh indigenous history and and indigenous people that were here before. Uh, Snake Hill is a community and I'm very supportive of this project. It is in my neighborhood and I think it's wonderful what Mr. Breschad is doing. I would maybe just want to relook at. I I wouldn't support these particular signs, but I I I'm not really sure where we go from here, but I do. I I wouldn't support these particular signs, but I I I'm not really sure where we go from here, but I do absolutely want to support something.
If I made the signage that was removed, you referred to some signage along the town trail. Those were the. Flat signs that were on metal. And that number of them, like you say, have been defaced over time. And so we, um that was a Parks Canada initiative along with the town years ago. Um so that's why we removed those, because they're they're they were no longer legible, I guess.
Um yes, or graffiti damaged um beyond the point of any use. Uh we did remove a few of the um. Supports that held signs uh where there were no signs as well uh that had already been destroyed. Um I think we're. We haven't done much of a ma- major cleanup along there, uh just assets reported, assets noted. Um we've gone and and removed anything that's hazardous.
Any other questions for Mister Greathead? And. As I mentioned, um. Are we um looking for any sort of motion regarding the clean up date? Councillor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. I I'm not prepared to make a motion, but I just wonder if we were to only accept this for information, it would just come off the motion action list and then be. Is that correct? And then there would be no follow-up and we'd be sort of finished with this?
Mister Given.
Deputy Mayor Melnick, well, so administration will certainly continue to work with the organization. I mean, we heard some discussion there and and Director Greathead has outlined how we'll continue to support their ongoing effort around the trees. Um certainly, we're happy to work with Mister Breschad around uh uh sort of the. Cleanup this year. I think Director Nedon identified that we'd be happy to have our contractor discuss with him about the um. Determining which materials could be removed and which ones are more likely to stay. Um we would continue to close any cases with any any leaseholder or any sort of. Uh stakeholder. I think the sort of this item on motion action, this was specific to this historic relationship and and. Um administration has, you know, provided some options. How would we do that? I think we could probably tie that item off and continue to support the initiative administratively on a long basis without that council direction unless there's some. Other specific initiatives that council wants us to undertake.
Thank you for that clarity. All right, so I think um Mister Greathead, if you have no other comments. Then we will still be looking for a motion to accept this report for information, I believe. Councillor Hall, uh you make that motion.
I will make that motion if there isn't any other um comments or questions from council to uh. Motion to accept this report information. Um I will also follow up with Mister Breschad and Grega Teagan. Again, as a resident of the neighborhood, I will happily become the champion of that neighborhood.
Thank you for that and uh there being a motion on the floor. Ask the question, all those in favor? And that is carried. Moving on to item seven point four. We have a. Labor market study at alignment review and um. Mister Given this uh was reviewed by Jenna McGrath. Um are you presenting on this one?
Deputy Mayor Melnick, yes, I will. Um the. Economic recovery task force coming out of COVID, I recommend that council support a labor market study. Um. The municipality provided some funding to the Jasper Education Employment Center, uh undertake that study. Uh I participated in the project steering committee through uh twenty twenty-three. And towards the end of twenty twenty-three, that study was presented to council and and adopted. By council and is currently on the municipality's website under the plans and reports section. At the time, the study was presented to council, council provided direction to administration to. Review the plan to identify opportunities for the municipality to participate in the plan's implementation and then to report back to future meetings, recommendations. This is that report back. Um although there are a wide variety of areas, and so administration is advising specifics, uh it is here to identify. Uh where there's the greatest opportunity where the municipality maybe seem to have a lead role in an issue and then up to council decided he wish to give some direction to follow up on any of. Any one or all of them. Um the high level of the study forecast the municipalities' future economic growth. And the labor demand that would result. Uh the site does see that our local. GDP or gross domestic product is expected to recover pre-pandemic levels by twenty twenty-five. And uh maybe with a slightly slower rate of growth compared to previous years, but certainly the community is recovering and I think that that's something we've seen reflected from stakeholders. Over the last while. The study also provides insight into just how different Jasper's local economy is from the rest of the province. Uh as a result of our, you know, real tourism-based economy. Uh the study notes that the accommodation food service industry is the largest employer in Jasper, employing over a quarter of our workers. Uh in the community work in that sector. Uh this can be compared to the rest of the province. Where that sector typically employs just six percent of workers. So that's a really vast difference and and a material difference of why Jasper is. Not the same as other places in the province. Out of the two hundred, sorry, two thousand four hundred and forty people employed in Jasper in twenty twenty-one, again, these are twenty twenty-one, we're sorry, the employment would have increased since then. Um but at that time, sixty-three percent of those workers were employed by industries in the tourism sector, which includes other. Areas other than just uh accommodation and food service. Uh sixty-three percent, just over sixty-three percent were. Uh in industries that were identified uh by original metrics as the tourism sector. Again, in contrast to the rest of the province, uh the rest of the province would typically see only twenty-eight percent of its workforce. In the tourism sector. So again, Jasper is vastly different in terms of our local economy and the local labor force than the rest of the province. Looking forward, the study forecasts labor demand to increase by an average rate of just over two and a half percent each year to twenty twenty-six. Which they suggest translates to a need for an additional hundred and fifty-two permanent workers in the community over those two years. So. Um you know, the top line here is Jasper's very different from other places in the province in a in a very material way. Jasper's local economy is going to continue to grow, uh and Jasper's local economy is going to continue to need more workers. So that really starts to say, okay, so what can Jasper do to be a uh welcoming uh and healthy place for workers? Uh to maintain our economic competitiveness, uh but also to ensure that uh. That the labor force in in Jasper has a good quality of life. The report breaks down its findings and recommendations into five key areas, hiring and training, sourcing external labor. Improving company culture, addressing seasonality and cost of living and housing. Uh I should maybe I should say that's actually six sections. I combined those latter two. Um the municipality obviously uh is an employer, um but is not the largest employer, you know, uh. We're government, we're outside of that tourism industry. So a lot of the recommendations really are are focused towards the business sector and things that. Individual employers or uh business sector representatives like the tourism uh tourism Jasper, the Chamber of Commerce. Can and should be doing to support the labor market. The municipality uh is implicated in many of these, as I said, both as an employer but also as a support to employers. Um and then also, uh I would want to highlight on that, on the quality of life. Side of the equation, which is spelled out in those cost of living and housing areas. Um administration uh took a similar approach to what we did with the uh Tourism Jasper Destination Stewardship Plan. Where we assess the municipality's role using the same scale uh of activator, facilitator, collaborator, advocate. Again, those those uh terms were suggested by Tourism Jasper. We just thought it might be useful to maintain consistency in how we would, you know, sort of review these two different plans. Uh administration, the attachment to the report shows administration's assessment of the twenty-nine major recommendations in the study and the roles the municipality is likely to play. As well as activities that are either currently underway or planned, um and some recommendation of where. Uh you know, council may wish to um. Ask for further information or to refer an issue to administration. I won't go through all twenty-nine. I know the council's had a chance to see this and and you may have other considerations, but. I will uh highlight some of the ones where we are either the activator or the facilitator. So taking a more active role in either being the one to lead. Um and make something happen or being one who would call other parties together in order to address an issue. So the first of these is under company culture and Jasper's brand. Um there's a recommendation to establish a health check program to support mental health for local employees. Um and again, this is just administration's assessment. Council's free to disagree, uh but. Uh from my perspective, uh the study identifies uh that the municipality could play a role. I. Would see that there's a high level of uh crossover with our existing services under community outreach services. Um the report actually identifies that uh the municipality through uh community outreach should be the lead entity on the project. And while this concept is actually probably quite closely aligned with a lot of the current efforts, the specific focus of a health check program would be new. Um and would require the participation of a variety of other employers uh to sort of um help make inputs. So this isn't a current program. It is quite closely aligned and maybe overlapping with other existing issues or programs in costs. Um but would require additional effort and the participation of many other parties to really make a robust program. Moving down to uh the section under cost of living, uh again, focusing on either facilitator or activator items. Uh the first one under cost of living where we come up as a facilitator. Um form strategic partnerships between non nonprofit organizations, local crocheters, the food bank and other stakeholders to educate and advocate for more affordable food in Jasper. Council will obviously be well aware of the municipality's undertaking a fair bit of work in this area. In terms of nurturing the development of the Jasper Food Alliance, which does consist of a number of those partners. Um the alliance's mission is to increase food security Jasper through partnerships, programming, research, to create resilient regional food systems. So I would suggest that that work is underway right now. This does tie into the next item, which was introduce a food security section, the newcomer orientation program to increase awareness of. Food bank essential items and support programs and provide a comprehensive list of free and low-cost programs available to members of the community. Again. Municipality is potentially a facilitator there. Uh this item could be referred to the uh Food Alliance to integrate into the work. Uh into their work and could be highlighted to the settlement services, local immigration partnership to highlight uh need to do that. There were two other items in this area that could be forwarded to the Jasper Food Alliance for consideration. Uh those were create a strategic partnership for an essential goods wholesale program that would allow residents to purchase select essential goods at wholesale costs. And encourage community business leaders and large employers to collaborate and continue to. Uh contribute to community-supported issues like the take-home meal kits and low-cost meals to assist with food security. Um I might extend that to say, uh you know. Encourage uh and and work with uh business leaders and large employers to support other existing initiatives like the food bank. Uh or community dinners. Uh certainly somewhere like the Jasper Partnership Initiative might be an appropriate place to to discuss that and and raise that. Uh but also that could be raised through the Food Alliance. Under the housing area, uh obviously the municipality is very active in this area, so you'll see us as activator on a number of items. Uh regularly update the housing needs and demand assessment for Jasper. Uh the municipality last conducted assessment in twenty twenty-two. Administration would suggest that that study should be refreshed on a semi-regular basis. Uh perhaps every four to five years. Uh if we followed that kind of cycle, we would look at doing the next update in twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven. So supportive of that recommendation would just suggest that, you know, there is work underway. Maybe worthwhile to allow some of that to mature and then undertake the study again to see where we're at and and compare change over time. And looking at new strategies, um commission a local housing action plan. The M O J had had thirty thousand dollars in capital budget for a housing master plan. Um administration, you did not see that on the carry forward list. Uh because administrations are the view that we have a pretty significant housing-related activities underway right now. Um our focus is on the affordable housing bill on cannot. Um and so we would suggest that that should be uh brought forward along with the item. Uh of the housing needs and demand assessment and future year. So basically saying. Let's continue the work that we're doing in the housing area. Let's complete that work and then let's work with the community to reassess. The new needs that might come from there and create an action plan following those new means. Um increase the, so there's another recommendation, which is quite high level. To increase this plant units on the market, either by increasing utilization or building more supply. Obviously, the municipality is directly involved in building more supply. Uh through that affordable housing bill. And then the next item was one where the municipality could either be a facilitator or a collaborator. Meaning somebody else would initiate the discussion and bring the parties together, but would participate in it. Uh this item was centralized inventory of staff accommodation for all interested businesses developing a sharing system whereby vacant units are first available for businesses. So the municipality under our uh council-approved staff accommodation policy. Does say that we should offer our units when vacant up to other local businesses. So we're already doing that as an employer. This recommendation goes a step further to say some entity should. Bring together information about all of the housing supply that's, you know, owned or controlled by businesses. Um and ensure that there's some coordination for more effective utilization. Now that could be done by the Chamber of Commerce, it could be done by Tourism Jasper, it could be done by individuals collaborating together. It could be done by municipality taking more active role. Um you know, you can see there's a pretty wide variety of options that would be available to to do that. Um the administration just sort of acknowledging that the municipality would A have a role as a owner of staff accommodation units. And B could potentially play a facilitational in bringing parties together, discuss that. Uh but that would be in addition to and outside of our currently approved activities or certain planned activities for twenty twenty-four. Um I would, again, I won't go through all the others where the municipality could either be advocate, you know, lending our voice to support uh initiatives of others. Or where we could be a collaborator, supporting the initiative of others or participating in an initiative that was led by others, but they are here. Um the recommendation in the report today is that committee receive the uh. Labor market study alignment review report for information. We do have alternatives if there are specifics that council would like administration to. Conduct further analysis or more follow-up on. Uh you could provide direction uh to administration, gather additional information on an identified area or areas. And return to a future committee. Um or you could refer an identified area to a future community to hold for more council discussion. Or some other venue that council might say is appropriate. Again, many of the initiatives in the reports' recommendations are intended to be led by others. Uh this is administration's. Uh evaluation of where the municipality may have a direct role. Deputy Mayor Malik, I appreciate that that was a lot of maybe quick talking, but I wanted to write a. Fairly quick overview of the report and its recommendations, recognize where we are in the day.
Thank you for that. Um I'll ask councillors if there are any questions after that um. Quite extensive report and uh good explanations in the uh chart. I'm happy to see that we're using the same um. Language as the Jasper Tourism Strategy gives a little more consistency in our in our documents between uh. Uh various entities and makes it easier to to mesh the two together. So we do have individuals working on a variety of the topics here. Um. Any questions for Mister Given? Councillor Demoda.
Thank you. Uh just because it's it's the last one and and the most fresh of of the uh briefing. Um the last one there is accepted for uh secondary suites, just to expand a little bit on that like. Just because it's it's kind of outsider jurisdiction, right? And and how would, what kind of concept? Was considered in incentivizing like financial contribution uh? And just a little bit of word by the three user.
Certainly, Deputy Grand, Deputy Mayor Melnick for Council of Moda. So uh there is some more detail in the report, but I think the. Uh the essence is that. Outside of. Land use planning and development approvals, which obviously are outside of our jurisdiction, the community, and I mean that very broadly, um you know. Uh businesses, municipality, others may have an interest in finding other ways to. Uh create an incentive for leaseholders to develop secondary suites. Uh certainly, you know, uh. At a fundamental level, there's a capital cost to that. It's money out of somebody's pocket to build either an accessory dwelling unit, a garage. To build either an accessory dwelling unit, a garage suite, or to construct a secondary suite inside a property. And I think it's a reasonable observation to say, well. What's the incentive for somebody to do that if the returns on investment, you know, that takes somebody a hundred thousand dollars to build or two hundred thousand dollars to build a. Accessory dwelling and garage suite. Why would they do that if it would take them forty years to make back their money? Right? And so, uh. This is the type of item where I think that there'd be a fair bit of. Analysis and and discussion that would have to happen to say, what would, what would? An appropriate level of incentive be? What potential incentives could there be? Other municipalities that have more control over. Land use and development may have the ability to waive certain fees. Now, so that's that's the video I've seen in others where affordable housing projects are not subject to the same. Fees and charges. Uh, obviously, we don't have that individual control. That could be something that we could talk over with parks. Um, the municipality could choose to uh identify funds. To to put towards direct subsidy of some of those capital costs to allow this holder to to make some. Improvements to their property that would allow the creation of an E V U or secondary suite. Again, that would be a pretty significant discussion, I think, at the council table. Um, but that's, that's, I think, the the ideas that are considered here. So it's not so much about the. Development approvals as how do you? How do you provide the financial incentive so it's in somebody's interest to create those kinds of spaces? Because. Right now, given the capital costs and the relatively. Uh, you know, the 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 payback would be quite long. And so it's not unreasonable to imagine that a a leaseholder would say. I can't afford to do that.
Well, thank you very much. And uh, I think those are really valid points and comments. Uh, you know, and and even branching off of the uh Tourism Jasper Initiative. You know, when we talk about. Money or needing support at higher levels for the resort municipality status, a lot of this information here. Uh, is really identifies, you know, the need for for some sort of uh. Different revenue. And I think something like that. You know, when you're talking about a whole community contributing and working together, I think incentivizing initiatives like this to to fully. Um, take advantage of opportunities to to house more people in the community more effectively for the labor market. I think that is a is a strong. You know, item that we can really emphasize when, sorry, when, if, if and when we ever end up getting. Some uh, some tools to get tourism revenue uh into the community. I think this, this is. These, this is one of the items we could focus on as a collaborator. And there are a lot of other ones, but I I think that, you know, when it, when we talk about maximizing opportunities, and I think this is one of them there that. Uh, could help the community greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demoda. Um, other counselors, any comments?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Now, like I, I can really appreciate. The opportunity to have this come forward. I'm glad that we had originated through the uh. What was Task Force? The uh, the COVID Recovery Task Force, um, and building alignments within. It's a good base point. Um, but more than that. I just need to comment about the pleasure I had reading. This report last night because. As I, as I. Tried to inculcate in myself that the steps. I was drawn to uh a connection with a very famous song. Uh, that I thought I would share. So it's, it's. Activate, facilitate, collaborate, or advocate. We are the very model of a labor market passionate. And so all night long I was thinking of, uh. Yes, it's a. In a part of the Pirates of Penzales and that line and uh without um. Tourism Jasper having come up with those categories of. Activate, facilitate, collaborate, or advocate. I would have missed that, but it's an easy way to remember. Where we stand on this. So it's important that. Um, whatever we fit into. Um, we respect and acknowledge that we have a role to play. Uh, may not always and as rarely as an activate, but. Always as an advocate, often as a collab collaborator, sometimes as a facilitator. Um, I think it's it's critical to remember that. So. I appreciate it coming forward and I I thought that in addition to. A recommendation to receive the report for the information, I wonder whether. It might be prudent. To add a direction to administration to. Actually engage in study initiatives in the manner as indicated in the. Alignment review that's been presented. That is, when there is an opportunity to either. Activate, facilitate, collaborate, or advocate that we we direct now administration to engage at that level. On the basis of.
Thank you for that, your worship. Other counselors? So there is a song in my head now for the rest of the day. And but we do need to to make this happen. Um, we do need to have a motion that would facilitate the um addition. Of the sentiments I think the mayor is still comfortable. Uh, looking for Mayor, uh, he's looking to make a motion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Now, I will make a motion that committee. Received the la- labor market study alignment review report. For information and that committee direct administration. To engage in study initiatives in the manner indicated in the alignment review report.
Thank you for that. Any discussion on the motion? All right, I um. It's very clear, uh, motion. And I could call the question. All those in favor? I see all five of us. Some delays, but uh. That is passed. And thank you. We're now moving on to seven point five. And that is the position request Director of Urban Design and Standards, Mr. Given.
Yes, thanks very much, uh, Deputy Mayor Malik. Um, so I acknowledged that we were ready at noon, so uh, this is an important issue. Um, I don't want to blast through the report, but I'll provide the highlights. And certainly, again, I know the council has read, has read the report. Uh, as council knows, uh. The municipality has been working with Parks Canada uh. In collaboration for for many years on issues, on issues related to uh the development of the town site. Uh, in twenty twenty four, the approved capital budget includes seventy five thousand dollars towards a collaborative effort with parks to develop a new community plan. And a hundred fifty thousand dollars towards a transportation man plan. So these are some significant planning documents that uh we have. On the books uh to proceed with in this upcoming year. Additionally. Um, the municipality has been working with Parks Canada uh around matters related to development approval authority. Um, and land use planning for some time, as council and community are aware. In alignment with uh our ongoing collaborative work with parks and a number of areas where the municipality is already implicated in. Uh, providing municipal approvals, uh encroachment agreements and other forms of. Uh, opinion on development matters. And the upcoming planning projects, uh. Master plan projects that are underway. Administration is recommending that. The municipality does need additional resources to be able to to be the lead on these types of matters. Um, administration is recommending that uh council amend the twenty twenty four budget. To establish a new position of Director of Urban Design and Standards. The position uh would. Report directly to the C A O and would address, as I said, both our current needs where the municipality is. Implicated in the existing system of land use planning and development approvals. Uh, there are many cases where uh a development requires municipal sign off. Uh, we have tried over the years to to bring that process together to make it easier for developers where we need to provide. Uh, opinion from the fire department um on solid waste collection, on other utilities. Uh, we don't currently have a lead in that and uh that has been, I think, a bit challenging for the development community. Um. This position would be able to play a lead role in that, would play a lead role in uh. Managing encroachment agreements uh on behalf of the municipality. And I guess the uh more important functions in addition to those ongoing ones. Would be to lead the municipality's participation in the collaborative efforts with Parks Canada around. Uh, the community plan development. The position would provide guidance and oversight in the creation. Implementation and application of urban design standards. So the municipality in many areas outside of land use planning. Um, maintains a number of standards uh that impact the urban form. Uh, including even as we heard today, uh discussions around sidewalk seating and use of patios. Um, there are in many other communities, those types of discussions would be handled. In an area outside of the legislative services area or protective services area where we currently handle. We tend to see them sort of through a enforcement of bylaw. Rather than a comprehensive impacted built urban floor approach. This position would start to transition us to to taking that that latter approach, which would take that bigger picture view. Um, the position would also uh coordinate and lead public engagement efforts on behalf of the municipality. For projects such as the community plan, the transportation master plan, uh, the cannot drive affordable housing project. And any uh private infill developments in the future R C P site development. Uh, and finally, this would be a subject matter expert that would serve as a key resource for municipal administration. Offering expertise and support for existing development related tasks and challenges as I noted before. The uh position is, uh, has been proposed previously to council. Uh, council in the twenty twenty four budget. I started in the twenty twenty three budget, uh, chose to uh allocate funds for contractor position rather than to establish an ongoing position. Um, the work of that contractor, I think, has been quite successful. Council is seeing results from that. Um, but as we move forward, it is, I think, uh, my advice that we need to establish this position as we start to build out that capacity within our organization. Uh, the twenty twenty four costs of creating a position are estimated to be approximately ninety five thousand dollars. This is reflective of approximately half of the year of having a position. Um, after we would undertake posting and recruitment, uh, I imagine that we wouldn't have that position in place uh any earlier. Um, that cost would cover salary benefits and some office expenses. Uh, looking forward to twenty twenty five, administration would estimate that the cost of that position and again, those office salaries. Uh, office expenses would be approximately a hundred eighty thousand dollars. In order to fund this position without an impact to the taxpayer, uh, administration's proposing that the twenty twenty four startup costs be funded through the financial stabilization reserve. And looking forward, administration expects that future years' costs would be significantly offset through savings in other areas. Uh, which we'd be able to detail in the twenty twenty five budget discussion when we come to present that uh in the fall. So, um, as I said, administration is recommending that our. Organization needs additional capacity in this area. Uh, we need to have some subject matter expertise, uh, that is. Uh, a regular part of our municipal administrative team. And it's my recommendation that committee recommend council. Amend the twenty twenty four budget to create a new full time permanent director of urban designs and standards position. Deputy Mayor Malik, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Mr. Given. This is a fairly substantial report and. Um, good to hear that this year's funding would come through, um, as you mentioned, uh. One of our uh stabilization funds. Um, of course, that fund will probably be potentially enhanced a little more later this year when we get our. Final budget numbers from twenty twenty three or actual numbers in twenty twenty three. And we're able to see what transfers to reserves will occur. Um, do any counselors have any questions? Or Mr. Given? Counselor Demoda.
Well, mine's uh one more of a budget uh for twenty twenty three. Um, and we committed all of our potential surplus. To. I guess move forward, um. In the, I guess, milring, when we were establishing that there is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars or something in there and. Uh, minimum and if I'm just looking for an opportunity, if we have a little bit more of a surplus, if we can. Maybe use that at least for this year to, you know, um, as far as the amendment goes to help cushion some of that, the change.
Mr. Given?
Um, thanks, Deputy Mayor Malik for counseling. So, uh. The uh twenty twenty three year end surplus is still going to be brought to council. I would expect there will be a surplus there. I don't have that number. Second, we won't uh, won't uh make a guesstimate of that. And under our existing policy, any year end financial surplus is, you know, we have a way that that's split out into our reserves. And at least a portion of that would go to the financial stabilization reserve, which, so administration is proposing to use the financial stabilization reserve. To support this position for twenty twenty four, uh, and council has the knowledge that that reserve is regularly replenished. Through any year end surplus from prior year. So, so while we're in advance of that decision, I do suspect that there will be, you know, some contribution to the financial stabilization reserve. And in any case, the financial stabilization reserve does have uh adequate capacity to be able to fund this request.
Thank you for that explanation. Any further questions? Um. Counselor Demoda, did you want to follow?
No, I'm having a little trouble with this one just because on the, in the last budget cycle discussions for twenty twenty four. The only position I really wanted to see was some, something that would actually influence. Um, more revenue coming to the municipality and I'm still, I understand the purpose of this and I think it's setting us up properly for what we need to do. Uh, and I'm glad I have another week to to contemplate it if if there is a motion to to move it to council next week. So, yeah, it does, it it does cause me a little bit of concern, um, politically and, you know, financially. But at the same time, you know, uh, when I'm looking at it, is this the right thing to do? That's, that's kind of where I'm leaning towards. Uh, so, yeah, that's all I have to say about that. Sorry if, uh. I interjected before the mayor wanted to speak, but I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm sorry. Thank you, Counselor Demoda.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Malik. Through you to Mr. Given. I believe earlier this month, there was an administrative meeting uh with Parks Canada regarding, I think. The process to review the Jasper Community Sustainability Plan. And so I'm just curious if there's any information you can share about. What the the timeline looks like for that and whether this particular position. You think could could aid in that if it was there in time.
Deputy Mayor Malik for Mayor Ireland. Yes, as as council, the community are aware, uh, municipal has budgeted that seventy five thousand dollars towards. The renewal of the community sustainability plan or the community plan. Um, that's about half the money that we would expect, uh, parks being the contributor to that. Uh, administratively, we've had discussions that the uh community sustainability plan. Redevelopment or development process uh would require both ongoing administrative support through the use of a secretariat. You know, an administrative body to be able to support that initiative. Uh, we would likely be seeking out a contractor, contractors to to run that process. Um, but we will need to have administration dedicated overseeing the contractors representing the municipality's interest. And then also supporting um. Public engagement in that, uh, as well as governance engagement. Um, it's quite common uh through these types of planning exercises that there'd be some sort of steering committee that would reflect. Uh, council, uh, in our context, it would likely reflect council and representatives of Parks Canada as well as members of the public. So that's sort of. Body of uh stakeholders representing sort of the various interests would guide the development of that plan and the administrative support. Um, would uh work them through that process. Um, we see this being a twelve to eighteen month process of development in that community plan that will need ongoing, regular administrative support. Through every step of the way. We certainly want to ensure that we have. Administrative staff that work for the municipality of Jasper that have the requisite subject matter expertise. To ensure that our interests are adequately represented at the table. And so, yes, the intent would be to have this position in place as soon as possible. I would certainly support the, you know, the administrative efforts in the interim. But on an ongoing basis through that, you know, twelve, eighteen months, we need to have somebody that has different knowledge and experience than me, different, you know, subject matter expertise to ensure that that our interests are well represented. So that's the long version. The short version is, yes, we would hope to have this position in place as soon as possible to support the community plan and development. And then on an interim basis, that's something that I would leave until we can have a position placed.
Thank you for that. And is it fair to assume that an individual would potentially possess the skills to lead through both the redevelopment or review of the Jasper Community Sustainability Plan and the transportation master plan, there'd be a link between the credentials of a person and they could manage both of those because the transportation master plan review is also capital budget and it's, there's another relatively large amount of capital dollars proposed for that. Also, this person could conceivably at least be qualified to do both.
Deputy Mayor Melnick for Mayor Ireland, that that's exactly right. As reflected in their worth, the municipality has a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the transportation master plan. That's an independent planning document that the municipality would undertake about how public spaces and streets and sidewalks are used. And council knows that there have been a number of issues identified over the last year. Everything from paid parking, bus access, you know, and a really wide variety of issues that would be pulled together in that transportation master plan. And all of those are not just about how wide is a sidewalk. They are about how does movement of people through the community impact the way the community functions. And so there certainly is a expertise that we don't have on our current team that we need to have to ensure that any consultants that we have working on that are guided appropriately. And that all of these issues that have been coming to the council table are integrated into that discussion in a way that leads to the outcome that both council and the community would want to see.
Thank you for that. Other councillors?
Okay, so. Helsi Demoda? Well, just, you know, because we're in a spitballing scenario. Just contemplating even contracting workout. I'm looking at, you know, what that job description might be and and cost of, you know, maybe attracting somebody with that, those skill sets here and housing and all that other stuff, you know, I just, you know, we don't know until we get there what that'll look like, but, you know, I just just throwing stuff in the air here to see if something sticks. Because that's, that's a big commitment. That's more than some CAO is making other communities. I think maybe not sure. That's a high level of expertise there. You know, I I'd like to see something like that in our community. There's a lot of, a lot of things to consider.
So if I would just play in that, so this is another senior manager with the intention of having that person report directly to the CAO. And this will help us move along in a number of projects that we would have normally undertaken. Would there be some opportunities to save perhaps some consultant dollars to help labor the salary of this individual? I I know that, you know, moving forward, we have money in the budget. There's a variety of ways of of spending it, and some of it is direct labor and some of it is the use of consultants.
So this role may be able to, because we would have more in-house expertise that would have, you know, different background and specialization than we have today. There may be some of the activities that that we would undertake in terms of describing how we would, you know, do our, some of our re-space redevelopment. You know, council will remember that we had some discussion and used external consultants to support us through establishing a plan to come up with a concept around the redevelopment of Lions Park and Robson Park. I wouldn't suggest that all of that work could be undertaken by this position, but we certainly needed to lean more heavily on external consultants because we had nobody with this expertise in-house. So going forward, we would be able to scope any consultant support differently because we could say, okay, what portion can we do in-house? Given this new capacity, what portions would we need to bring in from outside? The other thing I would say is that there is likely an opportunity, and I would hesitate to to quantify at this stage, but there are also revenue opportunities associated with this. There are a number of processes in place where the municipality plays a role in providing opinion or agreements for private leaseholders in many communities into things like encroachment agreements. I may have a cost associated with it. There may be other areas where we don't currently charge where another municipality may. And that would be another area where we could offset some of these costs. Again, I would hesitate at this stage to quantify that. But in addition to our ability to reduce costs when it comes to external consultants, I think that there may also be an opportunity for us to increase revenue through other types of visa charges that would be associated with this work, the work that we currently undertake.
Thank you for that. Councillors, any other questions?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Again, through you to Mr. Given. The briefing note indicates that this would be for salary benefits and office expenses. A little bit difficult to imagine a new department with a director without any support staff. So is it anticipated that that reference to office expenses would include some element of support staff, or if we were to accept the recommendation and direct you to create and infill the position, would we expect that request to be followed by another request for support staff for the position?
Deputy Mayor Melnick, for his worship. So the direct answer would be known at this time, administration's first look would be to see if there's an opportunity to provide the level of administrative support required through existing resources. So reallocating existing admin positions, council will know that we've received support from council for a number of administrative, sort of administrative assistant positions over the last couple of years. We would look first at reallocating those. And then being a position to have a discussion with council at future budget cycles about whether the scope of the position grew to a point that it required additional support. And we would obviously have to make a justification about the change in scope of the position, whether that might entail additional resources and any revenue or costs associated with that increased scope. So, you know, regular budget discussion, we certainly would propose that in twenty twenty four, we would reallocate existing resources required by that admin support. Considering twenty twenty five, I think there could be a discussion that we had with council about whether the scope of that position is proposed to change in twenty twenty five or whether it would continue the same. If the scope was going to grow, then the administration would likely come forward with a request. At this stage, we are specific in scope that, you know, we don't, unless something changes in the, between now and the fall, administration doesn't see the scope necessarily changing. If there was a material change to our context between now and the fall budget discussions, then certainly we could reflect that and highlight any recommended additional supports that we record.
Thank you. Many thanks for the worship. Councillors, if there are no other questions, we do have a recommendation before us. And this will come to us at the table next week at the regular meeting. Councillor Demoda, did you wish to make a motion?
Well, if someone was going to, I'm just wondering if the wording the committee recommend council consider amending the twenty twenty four budget. And the reason I'm saying that is because I'm just, I'm not, I'm not entirely convinced just yet to recommend council, to recommend council make that decision. So that's where I'm kind of at.
I'm sure that verbiage could be accommodated in there in the interim. I take it due to review information that perhaps have other questions for administration?
Yeah, no, it's it's kind of a wobbly approach, I understand. But, you know, just given that information and having the weekend look over, unless somebody else wants to, like, I I just think it's, you know, it's something that we should consider at council right now. But, I mean, it's just, it's semantics, I guess.
So would there be a councillor willing to make the recommendation with the amended verbiage, which it really won't be amended, it'll just be the verbiage that you would choose to use making the the motion?
Well, I think anything that comes forward that has a financial implication now is a hot potato, no matter what it is. Like, you know, every week we've got something, whether it's a skate park, money for here, money for there, and today it's a, it's a position. And, you know, we've already decided on a budget and we have a lot of new things coming up. There's a lot of conversation in the community about spending. So it's just, we're in a tough spot, and I think it's just, it's one of those things that it can't be taken lightly. And I appreciate what we have here. You know, we've denied other positions already based on different merits, and I appreciate the merit behind this, and I I see the need for it. But I could see by a lot of hesitation that it's a difficult thing to move forward. So
no, thank you for those comments. Other councillors? Mr. Given, would it understanding, this is a longer term, not just adding to this budget, but also to the next year's budget. In hiring such a person, do you think this might be able to be done by the first of July, or is it quite likely we might be looking for this individual into the fall or by delaying this individual by, say, a quarter of the year to save some money? How would that affect the the moves here strategically and working with Parks Canada on the community plan and so on?
So administration's advice is that it will likely take some time to recruit this position. If we're going to leave it to the latter half of the year, then the community plan initiative will move at the pace that our current administrative capacity can handle and will move in the absence of having any on-staff expertise in this area. You'll get me. It's what you'll get in terms of of expertise, in terms of crafting, you know, that process and supporting it. And I certainly feel comfortable and excited about doing that. But council will have an absence of of administrative staff that have experience in this area. Certainly, administration, you know, will continue to support the initiative as I've been doing. I think the advice here is that that sixth month is the likely time that would take to recruit, to get somebody in place. Anything later than that, certainly we can work with that. I think in terms of the cost benefit, by the time we get to the last quarter of the year, we will have already written the RFPs for consultants. We will have started working upon both the transportation, ideally, we will have started working both the transportation master plan and the community sustainability plan. We will have set up the bodies to be able to support those. Public engagement would be underway. And while we have ongoing needs and future needs, so the position would always be helpful. We have significant activities that are scheduled to start sooner rather than later. And so that's why administration is saying, well, we don't need a full twelve months. Our circumstance is that we should have this position in place as soon as possible.
Councillor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Melnick, my question for administration, just under the financial part of this report, administration expects that future year costs, could administration expect that future years costs could be significantly offset?
Deputy Mayor Melnick for Council Hall, that that's exactly right. So council did previously receive information from our consultant, Albert Flutman, who provided some estimation of future costs and revenues. And so, again, as I said, administration would expect that future years' costs would be offset by revenues in other areas. Again, this is intended to be a phased-in approach to increasing our capacity to deal with any range of issues. But absolutely, there is an expectation that revenues could be associated with with this. And administration expects that prior to budget this fall, we will be able to clearly illustrate to council what savings we would expect. Again, the intention here is to ensure that this position that's being proposed for twenty twenty four and for twenty twenty five would have no financial impact on municipal property taxes. And that's what's being proposed.
Councillor Wexler?
I I guess, listening to CAO Given and to some of the answers to questions, I would like to make the motion because if we don't make a motion today, then the issue dies, but we're not making a firm commitment until next week when it's an actual council meeting. So I will make the motion that committee recommend council consider amending the twenty twenty four budget to create a new full-time permanent director of urban design and standards position with the hope that all all of us will ask more questions and be well prepared to make that a very important decision next week.
Thank you, Councillor Wexler. We have a motion on the floor. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the motion? We've had some good discussion and understand the apprehension. Is your worship?
I will speak in favor of the motion, which I will support. I think adding the words consider amending doesn't, I mean, I I appreciate why it's there. And I I respect that the initiative by councillor Demoda to include that or persuade the move to include it. I don't think it really changes anything because it is always open for consideration of council when something comes forward on the recommendation committee. But I think that, as councillor Wexler indicated, it doesn't get to council unless we move it there. This gives both the public an opportunity to be aware that we won't be having these discussions. It gives more time for contemplation by council members and contemplation by council members and it doesn't bind our hands other than further consideration. And I, as one who voted against the addition of this position in 2023, I thought that it was premature at that time. But the day is coming and as that day arrived, we have to make a determination and there is lots of work on the horizon, really important work for the future of the community. And we would benefit, the community would benefit from added capacity and expertise. So I I am happy to support the motion and come back to further debates a week from now and anticipating that we may hear from some members of the public and that's certainly fair, we'll have that before next week and counselors will have had an opportunity to consider more questions that they might have, but I think it is time to to move it forward and bring it to the council table for debate, so I will support the motion.
Thank you, your worship. Counselor Demoted?
I I supported too in concept and, you know, I was trying to devise a motion here and I was going in the direction of committee directing administration to return to the regular council meeting next week for the request for the position again, but it's it's just semantically different. It's getting to the same thing. So regardless of how it's said, the mayor's right, you just have to move it forward and then have that debate next week.
Thank you, Counselor Demoted. I myself will support the motion as well. I did open with some I did suggest some adjustments to maybe the start date of the of the position and we heard from administration the pros and cons of that happening. I think that'll be something for us to consider as well between now and next week. As was mentioned, that it needs to get to the regular council meeting to have a decision made and we can have further discussion then. Any other counselors? Counselor Waxer, did you want to close?
I guess I was doing some reflection this weekend after listening to some of the speeches at the Ryan Mulroney funeral. And one of the things that stuck out for me there was that leadership must not focus on the quick headlines and and making people happy in the short run, but instead must focus on what's good for the community in 10 years and beyond. And so I'm going to always keep that lens in my decision-making. I thought I found it helpful.
Thank you, Counselor Waxer. With the motion on the floor, I'd like to call the question, all those in favor? And that has carried unanimously. Thank you for that, everyone. We are going to finish, I think, before we have a break. The next item we have is on, do you want to take it five minutes?
I have to.
Sure. Why don't we do that? Five minutes and then we'll come back. We'll be back at 12:40. Welcome back, everyone. We took a break after item 7.5. We're now at number eight, the motion action list and we'll go to Mr. Given for a note on the wish.
Thanks very much. I want to play.
Does your mic get sent on, Bill?
Thanks. So part of the challenge of being both on Zoom and controlling this mic, like Mike, but
This mic is off.
Mike, I didn't collect, I didn't touch this mic.
Nobody in the world can hear you right now.
Okay. Yes, I believe attendees can hear me if I'm speaking through a regular council mic. So I will apologize for that, trying to manage a couple pieces of technology at the same time. The items on the motion action list are that administration's recommending were dealt with today, where the Snapes Hill Happy Love Trees item from October 3rd, that can be removed, along with the labor market study from number 28, that could also be removed. And then we're proposing one change to the timeline on the next sheet, the 2024 mill rate discussion and a workshop. Both mill rate ratios, administration's recommending that that needs to be moved forward to next month. Certainly, it is a priority. We want to ensure that we have time for fulsome discussion prior to setting the mill rate. But obviously, if it isn't happening this month, then we want to ensure that that forward. Those are the only updates that administration has proposed for changes to the motion action list. So the recommendation would be that committee approved the changes to the motion action list as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Was there any questions by counselors to the changes or anything else on the motion action list? There being none, then I would be looking for a motion to approve the updated motion action list. Counselor Waxer, thank you. There were no comments, so I'll call the question, all those in favor? And that's carried. Brings us now to counselor meetings, upcoming meetings, number nine. As people are getting themselves ready, I'll indicate that there is a Jasper Yola at Historical Society Annual General Meeting this evening. At seven o'clock, the public is invited and I'll be attending that. Other counselors, other meetings? Counselor Waxer?
We had last Thursday, the inaugural Communities in Bloom meeting and another one planned at the end of April.
Thank you. Other counselors? Your worship.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. For the information of other counselors and the community. I received notice recently along with an invitation to be present when the Banff Canonaskis M L A presents a motion to the Legislative Assembly on April 8th. The motion which is recorded on the public order paper, so it's public information about revealing any confidential information. The motion to be made is be it resolved that the Legislative Assembly, A, recognize the importance of tourism on Alberta's economy and the need to balance visitor experiences and resident affordability. And B, urge the government to work with municipalities in Alberta's Rocky Mountains with tourism-based economies to establish funding and support programs that ensure municipal taxpayers do not bear the financial responsibility for the additional infrastructure requirements and operational demands of those municipalities due to tourism. So I, as I say, I've been invited to be present in the assembly on April 8th to hear a debate on that motion. I think it would be useful to to understand particularly any items that come up in debate, which will help us better understand the challenges we may have to overcome. So I would propose to attend that if if committee thinks that that would be an appropriate use of my time. And following day, April 9th, I have been invited to attend a dialogue with Parks Canada CEO Ron Holman, which is occurring in it's a little bit unclear precisely the nature of that conversation, but as was indicated in Mr. Given's last report about the position, I've recently written to Mr. Holman regarding our position with respect to advancing initiatives in Jasper and he's going to be if not in town, at least in the neighborhood and been invited down to meet with him and others on the 9th of April and again, subject to consent or not from from committee, I would be prepared to do that, although it does mean that I would miss the committee of the whole meeting on April 9th. But both of those are upcoming meetings, which I would be happy to attend, but would appreciate confirmation from all counselors that appears to be an appropriate use of my time.
Just need to friend, not your worship.
Or perhaps the converse of Deputy Mayor can request that any objection be noted. And I would think that is not, there's no objection.
So in order to have clarity here, there is opportunities for the municipality to be represented by the mayor in two very high-profile situations to the benefit of our community. And unless counselors have a concern or questions, I support both of the initiatives that the mayor's been inviting to and would encourage him to attend. Other counselors? Counselor Demoted?
I don't want to make this longer, but I was thinking, you know, have the mayor go on the Monday and then you go on the Tuesday because I think the meeting would go a lot faster at this one. I fully support the mayor attending on those.
Thank you. Counselors? All right. Thank you for that. Other information, your worship?
Nothing else. Thank you.
Other counselors? Upcoming meetings? No? All right. Looks like we're going to number 10. Unless there's other upcoming, sorry, if that's it for upcoming meetings, upcoming events. We have two listed here. I do want to add again, the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce lunch meeting is at the Legion on April 17th at noon. And we do have the annual ski and Pride and Ski Festival. They will be hosting N E T M A on April 17th as well at five o'clock at Papa George's. We did note about the Fire Smart Day on the 27th of April. And if there are any other upcoming events that counselors may want to add to the list. There being none, before we adjourn, I would just like to thank the municipal staff, directors and all the volunteers who were at the community dinner last night. My understanding is that we served over 475 people and catering was done by Glenda the Great. I think it was a very successful season this year and just thank you to all of those individuals who took time to participate, not only from the municipality, but all through the last 12 weeks of the community dinner program. Counselors, if there is nothing else, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Hall? All those in favor? We are adjourned. I'd like to thank the public for bearing with us and attending today and we look forward to seeing you here on the Tuesday, the 2nd of March at 1:30 April, 2nd of April, my goodness, where the year going? Tuesday, the 2nd of April for a regular council meeting. You're adjourned.